Okay. Good morning and welcome to today's Planning Commission meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We could all stand in on our side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Vialobos, if you can give our TV coverage announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the Commission. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Polk, San Andres Valley, San Maria and Orca areas. We broadcast the Planning Commission hearings on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website as well as the county's YouTube channel and will be available for download in a day or two. Shall I move on to roll call?
Please do.
Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Park.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
And Chair Martinez.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to our agenda status report, Mr. Wilson.
Chair and Commissioners, in regards to this status of our agenda, we have two items on the agenda today. The first item is the appeal of the cannabis cultivation operation at 3376 Foothill Road in the Carpentry area. Staff and applicant appellants are here today for that. It was continued to today, I believe. And then the second item is the outdoor lighting and sign ordinance amendments that has been on our agenda and continued multiple times. And staff's ready to present on that item as well.
Okay. Any comments from the Commissioners? I think none. Why don't we move on to the projection report then?
Chair and Commissioners looking at the projection report. Our next scheduled hearing will be December 4th. And that will be here in Santa Barbara. We have a number of items on that date. There is a government co-consistency. We had continued the Laguna Blanca appeal to that date. And then we have the capital improvement program, presentation to the Planning Commission as far as the conformity review. And then we have an ordinance amendment package for that date. And then on December 11th, we will return to Santa Maria after a very long stint here in Santa Barbara. We'll be back in Santa Maria for a number of items on December 11th. And that is a report on the Strauss Wind Energy Project, their adaptive management plan. We continue the SPCAN appeal to that date, the Sentinel Peak Resources Truck Project. And then we have another ordinance package, which is the Emergency Shelter zoning ordinance amendments. Again, December 11th is in Santa Maria. And then that is our last hearing of the year. And then we'll move into next year, 2025, January 8th. We're already projecting an item on that date, an equestrian facility. And then we have on January 22nd, at our last hearing, we had continued the cannabis ordinance amendments to that date and as that is a special hearing. So that's already looking into January. One last item in looking at our schedules, not really a projection report, but close enough. We're tentatively looking at December 4th as the annual holiday luncheon with the Planning Commissions. And we wanted to see if the Planning Commission and Council's Office would be available on December 4th for a holiday luncheon.
Well, I know I am, but that's kind of self-serving. But no, any comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, I would be here. Yeah, I'd like that. And I can make a joke about getting a quorum together, but...
Commissioner Bradley?
I can make a December 4th. Also, on the schedule for December 4th, is there any way you can do the easement abandonment as a consent item? Save a couple of minutes?
I believe it solicitors and consent.
Oh, I didn't see. Did I see that? Oh, yeah, thank you. Great.
Chairman Commissioners didn't...
Mr. Reed says yes, Jim.
Okay. All right, we'll move for December 4th. We will work with the Chair on Agenda Management as far as scheduling certain items. Anticipate that we have the appeal of the Laguna Blanca go first so that the applicants and appellants could attend that and then leave afterwards. The other items is we can schedule so that way we're not impacting the members of the public for hearings. So...
Sounds good.
We'll work on scheduling that on December 4th for our holiday luncheon.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney, your light's on, but I'm assuming it's just... Okay, there you go. And now is the time for a public comment. And this is a period of time in which you, the public can comment about a matter that is not on today's agenda. And I don't have any speaker slips. I lost my Vialobos. If anybody's online?
Mr. Chair, I don't see any hands up for this.
Oh, okay. So then let's move on to Planning Commissioners informational reports. If this is the time where the Commissioners can provide any information they wish. And I don't see any. Okay. Approval of the minutes then. We're looking at the minutes for October 30th and November 1st for consideration. And then for a motion to approve them as we have, if we have any comments to add or not to add. So I'll look to the Commissioners.
I'll move for October 30th to be approved.
Commissioner Bradley, thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, Commissioner Reed. So all in favor? Or have any, anybody have any comments?
I'll abstain. I was not present on the 30th.
Okay. I see no comments. I would just ask for a voice approval. If everybody's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? And as Commissioner Cooney's indicated, he's abstaining from that one. So now we would have for the November 1st minutes, if anybody has any comments. Commissioner Cooney or Commissioner Bradley?
Well, I wasn't there, but I'm recused. Is that important to put in the absent column?
I'd imagine you would abstain, yes.
So I think what she's asking is, so the reason for her absence is because she was recusing from the item. But for procedure-wise, she's, I think she's clarifying, is it better just to say that she was just absent? It's a question.
Yes. Does it need to say recusal or absence because it's a difference in...
Chair Martinez and Commissioner Bradley, I think either one is appropriate, the discretion of the Commission.
Okay.
Let me make a suggestion that I, you know, you wouldn't want somebody to say later, well, there was something inappropriate by a Planning Commissioner. By stating the Commissioner recused herself, which was the right thing to do. That's, that's record that she did that. So I think that's a better way to do it, but I don't really care.
I agree, actually. So can we just call it recusal?
Okay, sure.
I'm looking for those minutes because I want to make sure. Does it read as such in the, then, in the minutes or... I'm looking for, do you have the minutes on you? Is it reading as such? I mean, that's what I want to make sure. We've agreed that it says recuse, correct? So...
So I think that, so I believe it's, Commissioner Bradley, unless you saw somewhere different. So it showed as absence on the attendance, but I think the, what she's talking about is in the motion to approve the project, I believe, which is on page two.
Correct.
So it says absent now. So I think that her, she's indicating that her preference would be to show that she recused for that item.
Okay, so that's what, that's what I'm looking for, a motion then for the minutes to be approved with that amendment. And so I'm just looking for, to the fellow Commissioners.
Motion to approve with that amendment regarding recusal of Commissioner Bradley.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and so with that being the motion, and there's, I see no other comments. I'll just ask for an approval of that motion by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone, any nays? Anyone abstain?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley will stay. So it passes. And so now we have the approval of those minutes with that amendment. And next, we have the Director's Report.
Chair and Commissioners, Director Palman has requested that we trail the Director's Report till later in the agenda. There's, she has a scheduling conflict this morning.
Okay, we can easily do that and accommodate that. So then what we're going to do is move on to our standard agenda, but I'll make this announcement. announcement before we move into it and ask for, in regards to those who are speaking, wish to speak publicly on a matter that's on our agenda today, and we only have two, the way I prefer to do it is if you're going to want to speak, you have to turn your speaker slip or raise your hand online before the staff finishes. Once staff finishes their presentation, there's no more acceptance of speaker slips, there's no more raising of hand to be added to those who are speaking. Okay? And I'd also ask that anybody in the gallery, that if you have any, if you have your cellphone on, please make sure it's on silent so we don't have any interruptions. And those who are online, same goes for you, I guess, if you have your phone with you. So let's move on to the first item then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is hearing on the request of a group of appellants, Los Conchas Homeowners Association, and neighbor considering case number 23 APL 14, an appeal of the Planning and Development Department Director's decision to approve a mixed light cannabis cultivation operation under permit number case number 19CDP 39, and after considering the environmental review documents, determined that as reflected in the sequel findings, no subsequent environmental impact or, or negative declaration shall be prepared for this project.
And we'll go to staff. While, any, any ex parte communications to be disclosed? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I have to report that I met yesterday in my office with three of the Los Conchas members, board members and individuals. They were Robin Miller, Mark Brinkley, and Jim Manoya, who's president of the association.
And Commissioner Bradley?
I had a conversation yesterday with Mark Brinkley as well regarding the appeal.
And I see no further. So with that disclosure, with those disclosures, we'll move over to staff now.
Good morning, Chair Martinez, members of the Commission. I'll start again. Good morning, Chair Martinez, members of the Commission. I'm Steve Connor, and I'm presenting the continuation of the appeal of the Island Breeze Mixed Light Cannabis Cultivation and Processing Project. On October 9th, 2024, the planning commission continued the item to today's hearing and requested staff to bring the item back with findings for denial. As a reminder, this project is a CDP for cannabis cultivation in an existing greenhouse. Based on discussion at the PC hearing, staff drafted this denial finding for your review. The denial finding is based on inadequate information in the odor abatement plan to demonstrate that odors will not be experienced in a residential zone. And here are the recommended actions based on the denial finding. Additionally, the Commission also has the ability to vote for approval based on recommendations presented during the October 9th, 2024 hearing. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Commissioners?
Commissioner Reed?
I have a question. Have any material facts relative to the project changed since October 9th?
Commissioner Reed through the Chair. I don't believe so.
None. Well, the only change that I recall, even going back as far as the June 26 meeting, has been the preparation and submission of an odor abatement plan by the applicant. Is that's correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Now, that plan and the basis for having you come back, that is because, you know, there is inadequate information in the odor abatement plan to demonstrate that odors will not be experienced in a residential zone? That's, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, prior to this, we had the initiation of our cannabis odor ordinance amendments and various other meetings. And it seems that I recall during some of those meetings, if you're in a location and there are a number of growers around you and you notice an odor, is it possible to determine based on your noticing an odor where it came from? Which one?
Chair Martinez and Commissioner Reed, no.
That's what I thought the answer would be. So just off the bat, since you can't determine where an odor came from, if someone in an area or residential area notices it, is it reasonable to expect the applicant to be able to include in his odor abatement plan information that an odor detected by a neighbor either did or did not come from their operation?
Commissioner Reed, I understand the question.
Okay.
I don't think I have an adequate answer. I don't think any of us do. I think the department made it clear at the last hearing that we feel that the odor abatement plan that they submitted met the code requirements. Based on the deliberation and direction by the Commission and the things that you talked about, this is what we drafted.
Right.
I do not, I agree with you. We cannot pinpoint a direct odor cause from this place at this time. That just hasn't happened.
Yeah, so I would, I would just suggest then that requiring them to demonstrate that odors will not be experienced in a residential zone, sounds to me like that might be an unattainable standard?
That is the code requirement.
That's the code requirement, but is that standard achievable in the absence of some magic analytical device to determine what the source was?
I'm not sure we can answer if it's achievable. I think the way that the code is written is we, we rely on a engineer, a hygienist to, to read the odor abatement plans to say, is this achievable with this plan? If they stamp it and we look at it and it meets our code requirements, that's what we go with.
Right.
Yeah.
And then at the same time, we're in the process of totally potentially revising our cannabis odor amendments right now, so even those aren't finalized. And the standards that they're talking about, which is seven at the property line, we're talking about a zero in this case, right? So there's discontinuity between those. Okay, that's, I'm done.
Commissioner Park?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the ordinance language that's in support of the finding. And I gave Mr. Villalobos something to put together as a slide. Thank you for doing that for our old eyes. Speaking for myself, anyway. So, Mr. Connor, in your staff memorandum, I, I saw the proposed denial findings, but I didn't see the statutory basis for them. So this is what you use, right? This is the ordinance portion that you're referring to?
It's correct, yeah.
And then, do you see that I, I bolded and italicized certain language? Is that the language that is based on this denial?
That is correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure. And it says, "The odor abatement plan must prevent odors from being experienced within residential zones as determined by the Director." So procedurally, the Director, through staff, already determined prior to the appeal that the OAP did prevent odors from being experienced with the residential zones. Is that right?
It's correct.
But then the appeal challenges that determination, and that's why it's here in front of the planning commission.
Yes.
Among other things. Okay. And this language has been in this ordinance from the adoption of the ordinance. It's not new language, correct?
It's correct.
Have we imposed that same standard on all the other LUP projects in Carpentry area that is putting the burden on the applicant to come in and show that no odors would be experienced within residential zones?
Yep, that is the same burden on all of them.
And as a practical matter, we've required that?
Well, we require that they do an OAP to try and meet this standard, right?
And they propose whatever odor system that they want, a hygienist, a hygienist stamps
it because they've reviewed it through their expertise, and then we put it forward that it meets the code requirement.
Okay. So that's what we've been doing?
Yeah.
And that's how, that's how they would meet that burden?
Correct, yeah.
And the same thing happened here. The plan was provided, and, and it was, it was amended to require a pretty large contingent of scrubbers, wasn't it?
Correct, yes.
And that's how they got scrubbers in here.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And, well, I just wanted the statute to be there. And, and you know, Mr. Seward, if I may?
Yes.
I would hope that all staff reports in the future, if they're referring, or memoranda, if they're resting on language in the ordinance, just simply quote the pertinent language in the ordinance so it's there for us to see.
Sure. Will do.
But, okay, I'll have further comments on deliberations, but I at least wanted this to be here so folks could see where the language in the proposed findings for denial comes from. And thank you for doing that, Mr. Connor.
Commissioner Bradley?
Just a question for Commissioner Park. So, so you're suggesting this be inserted into the findings? Where exactly do, have you, have you suggested that? Where in the findings that this goes?
No, I guess I wasn't clear. I'm not suggesting this go in the findings. I was suggesting, Mr. Seward, Seward, right now, that in this staff report? And in every staff report, that if a, if something important that's stated by staff, including language of the findings, is referring to language in an ordinance, then that language should be there in front of us. I experienced in the Sable hearing, for example, that it came down to reference to what some original permits stated. Those permits were nowhere in the record, other than the original record, 20 some years ago. And, and, and planning commissioners made a decision based on something that was not in front of them, not in front of the audience, not in front of anybody, and that was only referred to by staff or brought up by staff at the very last moment. I don't think that's a professional way to do it. And it's also confusing, just out of, for my own concern for time, I needed to track this down to understand the language. Now I understand the language, and I understand the basis of what Mr. Connor did, but I'd prefer to have it right there in the document.
So thank you. You're saying you just are encouraging it in the memo? That's, that was your point? In the staff report and the memo? That's what you meant, right?
That's where I think it should be in every case. Whether it needs to be in a given finding or not, is a case-by-case kind of determination.
And, and just one quick question. So this is a conditional use permit? No?
No. Chair Martinez, this is a CDP coastal development permit.
So is it?
So much less discretion than a CUP.
So in this situation, no odor abatement plan shall be required? Is this an Ag 2 situation?
No, this is Ag 1, yeah.
Ag 1, okay.
So that doesn't apply to this.
That takes that sentence, yeah. Out of the, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, just one last little nibble at the apple. I do notice with respect to the, you know, odors not being, you know, able to be experienced in residential areas. This is our third hearing. This is the first time it really emerged, a reference to it. But I also noticed, even as far back September 25th, our first hearing on the cannabis odor amendments, there it is right there, Article 2 Coastal Zoning Ordinance Requirements, Prevent Odors From Being Experienced In Residential Zones. So another suggestion that that probably be a uniform we applied every time we have a hearing like this, might have saved additional time and expense and grief on behalf of applicant and others if we could get that really upfront. And then, thank you.
I, any other questions for staff? Seeing none?
Staff is also here to clarify. If there's any questions on the scope of a CDP versus a CUP, I mean, in general, CDPs, LUPs, they're lower level permits, much less discretion because the findings that you see for those permits are very specific and they don't really have findings that are discretionary in nature. So we're not talking about neighborhood compatibility and other issues that you see with the CUP. It's pretty much, does the project comply with the code requirements in the development standards? So I think that's the big difference between a CUP and a CDP. And we're happy to answer any further questions you have on that.
I don't see any other questions right now. So right now, then, we would move on to appelle. Is anybody representing the appellant? The appellant in this matter is, that's what I was looking for in this, my antiquated paper. What's the, who's the, I want to make sure I know, who is the appellant? Is it a person or is it an entity?
I'm sorry, my name is.
Well, let me, let me get this clear in my mind first, though. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just trying to catch up on this thing and I got caught up in traffic, but I want to make sure who the appellant is. Can, can staff help me maybe with that? Who is the appellant? Is it a person or is it an entity?
It is the Los Conchas Homeowners Association.
Okay. So in all fairness, then, who is representing the Los Conchas Homeowners Association? Those, you two individuals? Okay. So in that sense, then, with you, then, your time is, is within this presentation for the appellant. And usually we give about, in this instance, we should probably give like 10 minutes at most in regards to this thing. Okay. So I don't know if you submitted speaker slips on the side here or not? Okay, so you didn't? Okay, I want to make sure we get things straightened out of my mind. Okay. The floor is yours.
Okay. My name is Robin Gettis, and this is Mark Brickley, and we both live at the Polo Condos. We're here to represent the Polo Condos, our neighbors on Foothill Road, our neighbors down at Paderro Lane, and even some of our neighbors in the Serena Park area. We've been up here before, and basically we feel that with Island Breeze, you know, granted, you know, full grow and, you know, to go into operation, I mean, we're already hemmed in with, on the top left there with Vista Verde Glass House, Twisted Roots. Right in the middle, on the left-hand side, you see Foothill Road, and you go two blocks and you get to G and K, and right past that, Autumn Brands. And the bottom left-hand corner, that large white rectangle, that's Island Breeze Farms. And you can see, you can see its proximity to the Polo Condos, those V-shaped red tile roofs and the, and the club right there on, on the, right, right to the right of it there. This is Island Breeze, less than 100 feet from the 139-unit Polo Condos and tennis courts where many children attend camps throughout the year. This is our entrance on Foothill, and right across the street is Island Breeze. And incidentally, that little corner on the right-hand side is, is where the processing is. So that's pretty close there. So that's pretty close there. The Planning Commission on October 9th, 2024, voted 3-2 to request that planning staff draft findings for denial of Island Breeze Farms' request for a CDP. These findings include that Island Breeze project is not consistent with the county's odor abatement standard because of inadequate information. Their OAP does not demonstrate that odors will be, will not be experienced in the designed residential zone. The applicant has not shown any testing results in their OAP that documents that odors from their cannabis facility will not escape and be experienced by Los Conscious residents. Additionally, PND's draft findings state that the county has received nuisance odor complaints directly across Foothill Road west of Island Breeze. If the volume of the complaints has been lower than in past years, it's likely because of complaint fatigue. Nearby residents have realized that their complaints have little likelihood of being acted upon and have given up reporting smelling cannabis. The applicant has been identified as a bad actor grower by the present First District Supervisor. It is the reason that a civil lawsuit was filed against Island Breeze Farms. The incoming First District Supervisor has indicated he is not support approving CDPs for cannabis growers who locate in Carpinteria Valley residential areas. In 2021, Bayer Scientific Company in an email to County Planning and Development stated that Island Breeze Farms was diluting their product and acting irresponsibly. It is noted that when PND recently attempted to schedule a site visit, they were told, they were told the entire staff at Island Breeze had the flu, so the PND visit was canceled. Families, children, older adults all live at our complex and are subject to cannabis odor. For older adults who are concerned with health issues, they do not need cannabis odor added to their lives. And here, you know, we're celebrating one more resident making it around the sun, so the birthdays are always the big celebration here. And basically, the Polo Condos were built by the Polo Club as initially a training grounds for polo players. And over time, people moved in and made them sort of a full-time residence. And as you can see, we get big crowds in the summer. Polo's been around for a long time. That clubhouse is built in '35, and they'd been playing a few years there at that location beforehand. And we get some of the best polo players from time to time, so it's a big draw. The season runs April to October, and a lot of people working there, they've got to care for over 300 horses and players coming in for special teams. And it's a, it's a big draw for the community. It, what makes, it gives it, not only does it give it a cachet, but it gives it a draw. People want to come to Santa Barbara. If you look on the front page of the Santa Barbara Magazine website, they have two tab headings, Wineries, Polo. And, you know, this is what Santa Barbara is selling you. And people like to come, you know, for these reasons. We hope our Planning Commission will appreciate the significance that Polo brings to the community and the area. Please help us preserve this special piece of the Carpinteria Valley and say no to Island Breeze. Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Mark Brickley, and I'm a long-term resident at Los Conscious. They've been renamed the Polo Condos, but it's always been the Los Conscious condominium project. We have about 300 full-time residents, and I'm one of them. I've lived there for over 25 years. I'd like to also say that in the off-season, when Polo is not present, there are gigantic tournaments involving hundreds and hundreds of people. You can see their cars backed up on Cali Real if you drive by. We just had a lacrosse tournament, a three, two-weekend, three-day lacrosse tournament, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, involving young women who were playing competitively. So it's not just a polo facility. There are a number of events that occur year-long in addition to the residents living there full-time. So I just wanted to point that out. I, I've never personally been involved in polo, but I've been a full-time resident there, so I just wanted to say that. I wanted to say that in addition to what Robin's PowerPoint, our PowerPoint presentation has stated, when Island Breeze increases its volume of production to full capacity, it's running about 33% now of what would, what they anticipate would be full capacity if they were to be granted a CDP. In addition to the inclusion of drying, packaging, and processing rooms, this dramatically increases the amount of cannabis odor to be mitigated in their operation. Their OAP does not assure or guarantee that no odors will escape the greenhouses. Just to underline that, I would also say that the OAP does not include verifiable results that odors will not be detected or experienced by residents at Los Conscious across the street. The PND findings that the proposed project is not consistent with the OAP development standards by the county cannabis regulations is accurate, and we appreciate your support in denying this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And any questions for the appellant? Seeing none? Is anyone here from the applicant? They're online, okay.
Mr. Lynn, Ms. Wooten, I think that you're up.
Hi. Ms. Wooten, would you like to go? Would you like me to go first? With that?
Go ahead.
I have some brief comments, thank.
Okay, let me make sure you know the timeline. Okay, so you got 10 minutes, and that also includes your time for rebuttal. I just want to make sure you knew that upfront, but announce yourself when you were speaking, before you start speaking, and that'll be great. Thank you. Floor is yours.
I appreciate that. I'm Attorney Joshua Lynn. I'm attorney for this project and for this appeal process. I can really respect what's being said from the folks at the Polo Fields. I think that everybody at Carp High School, where these things have been granted left and right, every time you drive down Foothill Road, if you go over the bridge at Summerland on 101 North or South, and specifically on Casitas Pass Road, I smell it everywhere. So, nobody else has been held to this standard that has been announced today. What I want to go over very briefly is that, one, a CDP is not a discretionary, and I think that there's some misunderstanding on that, respectfully, because the issue is, on a discretionary permit, is it good for the community and so forth? There are different criteria. Here, that's not what exists. When asked by this commission to make sure the odor abatement plant was more robust, we put in 200 scrubbers, that's 58 extra. That's 58 more than we were requested. We submitted a plan that was approved based on the standards of approval. And yet, I've heard folks in this Planning Commission hearing previously say, I'm just not going to vote for this project, but what I'm saying is that this is a ministerial and not a discretionary act. There is no basis in my view of the law and then how it's applied to the science, which is tricky. There are, and I think that the gentleman representing Los Conscious really did a great job of explaining just how many farms are right there. I can tell you, I've been out to every one of them, and I can tell you that this is, this would be holding Island View to a standard not previously adhered to by anyone. Any neighbor anywhere around there would either complain or at least observe those odors where they given the opportunity by somebody asking. One of the interesting things the appellant said was that, all the way to Paderro, that tells you what you need to know. He agrees. So because it's a CDP, I don't believe that you can have granted all of these previous projects and then cut this one out because of some perceived science that doesn't exist that measures where odor is coming from. That would seem to me to be an improper basis for denial. I think that politely, the OAP was determined to be a proper, this business of science about smells is not a part of the circumstance today. And I'm not trying to disappoint anybody or be hard on anyone, but I think it's a little bit simpler, honestly, than we are talking about. And I want to point something out. Island Breeze Farm hasn't had an odor complaint come to it in over two years. So, you know, this concept of exhaustion in making complaints, I can understand on some level, but this is the way our process is set up. This is the ordinance set that was determined by this county. And now this county, in my view in this case, is making an exception because there's so much pressure on it, even though we've just put in, I mean, we were asked to and just installed 200 scrubbers. It is absolute overkill for any full project during harvest, all the times when smell is more prevalent. And so, what I would ask is that this appeal is denied. I want to point out that when the appellant keeps pointing out that we are proven bad actors, that is absolutely untrue. That case was utterly dismissed, and Mr. Williams was, supervisor was simply proved wrong. That's just all that happened. They wouldn't have dismissed it. They absolutely wouldn't have. This county knows what it's doing. And so, I've had litigation lots of times before with it. And so, I'm just pointing out that, you know, when it's from here to Carp High, from Island View to Carp High to Paderro Lane, that what that proves is that nobody else is being held to this standard under the CUP, CDP, excuse me, which is sort of an LUP standard, which doesn't have the discretionary language of a CUP. And therefore, I'm asking you respectfully to simply deny this appeal as I think the law commands. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I believe you have another speaker, or no?
No, I'll let it, I'll let us save the time for rebuttal if needed.
Okay. So, is there any questions for the applicant? Hold on. I have one quick question, and it was just, there was a statement, and I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your last name. Mr., starts with a W, doesn't it? I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
Are you talking about me, Joshua Lynn?
Lynn, I'm sorry. I can't understand your last name.
Lynn, L-Y-N-N.
Okay, I have it with a W in my mind, that's why, okay.
No problem.
Thank you. You mentioned, you said a statement that science that doesn't exist, are you talking about the science for determining where the odor originates from?
Yes, unless you're very, very close to a building, for instance, or an area, there would be no way. And even then, you wouldn't know if there was contaminating odors from other farms next door. It doesn't exist. That's why these OAPs are so important, so that we show an overkill plan, so that we can do what science has best allowed to kill these smells. Every other complaint that's ever been made, starting two years ago, was dealing with a totally different system, unrelated, totally different, not comprehensive system, that just, the science is different. So, this plan that we put together at the request of this commission and the overkill nature in which we did it was designed to get around that science gap that we currently have in identifying farms and realizing that we're being held to a higher standard, so we're going to raise our standards, even though we believe that we've done everything heretofore with this OAP. So that's my explanation, yes.
Okay. Because what's causing the confusion in my mind is that if this science doesn't exist, then in the future, if somebody makes a complaint about you, how would it be disproven or proven?
I think that there are a number of things going on. One is, it depends a bit on the behavior of the other farms. If there have been complaints about their other farms nearby, then perhaps I would figure into the calculus. What we would do is bring out our OAP folks, those scientists, to figure out what, if anything, is going on, and if so, how to rectify that, and we would do it immediately. That what we're being told by them is that the way to cover, if you will, this science is to just overkill these scrubbers and make sure that on top of every other measure that we're taking, that it just can't escape, and that they don't get turned off and no games get played. That's not what we're talking about. When this thing is fully operational with these scrubbers, that will take care of the problem and allow us not to worry about that science gap, because as I think has been said in this meeting, it is really tough to tell. And so, when every other farm has been, had odor complaints, I want to say Glass House has something like 500 and something odor complaints. And when that happens, obviously, somebody takes action, but they're trying to identify how closely they can get to it. Glass House is very much operational, and yet, we haven't had a complaint in two years and we're being denied. So that's the part that is terribly hard to understand, given that it's a CDP.
Okay, and so the proposed amount of scrubbers to be installed, they have yet to be installed, correct?
Stacy can speak better to that. They were installed wherever there is any action at the moment. There are some empty rooms, as was said by the appellant. And so, in those rooms, they may or may not have been installed. I don't actually know the answer, because there's nothing in there. There's literally like, they're empty rooms full of, you know, boxes or equipment or something. There's no vegetation of any kind in anywhere. Anywhere there's anything, they're to be installed.
Okay.
I can speak to that, yes.
Yeah, and speaking to that, I'm going to post, I'm going to add to it, if you can educate me in regards to when, if they need to be added, what timeline are you talking about implementation of these additional scrubbers?
Yes, I can speak to that. The additional scrubbers, some had been, a handful have been added to the processing room to ensure no odor has escaped, but for, as for the cultivation bays, no additional scrubbers have been added pending approval of this project with the updated odor abatement plan. Mind you, we had had a previous odor abatement plan that was previously approved in 2022 by Planning, to which those, that plan and that equipment is currently installed, which is the buyers with the additional scrubbers that are in processing. The extra additional scrubbers proposed as far as adding for your commission's request at the June hearing, those have not been installed yet pending approval of this project at this point, if that makes sense.
No, I understand. Thank you. Those are my, those were my questions. I don't know if any other commissioners have any questions. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, the person who just spoke, I didn't get the name. Could you mention it?
Oh, yes. I'm Stacy Wooten, I'm the agent for the project.
What's your last name, Stacy?
Wooten, W-O-O-T-E-N.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry that information just wasn't available to me, but I appreciate the concern that has been expressed by your attorney that there's uneven treatment of various permits issued by this commission and this county. And it is true that the odor abatement plans, which are required in every case, vary considerably from one to the other based on the construction of the areas in which the cannabis is grown. And this case, the odor abatement plan is lacking in terms of any ability to show that the odors that would be created by the cannabis as it grows, as it's harvested, would be canceled out by the carbon scrubbers. The carbon scrubbers, according to your presentation, appear to be just numbers of scrubbers without any indication of the ability of any indication of the ability of the scrubbers to address the odors once the project is operating, even at the beginning stages. So the odor abatement plan is the center of this development. We can all drive by the location and see that the really worn down condition of the greenhouses, which for years and years grew flowers. And when they were abandoned, didn't appear that there was any substantial improvement to the greenhouses. So can you address that? What has been done to the physical greenhouses to prevent odors to come from escaping?
The ones that are being used have all the equipment that they need and more equipment than has currently been called out in any other farm that I know of and in the ordinance, more importantly. And then as it, no pun intended, but as, as the project grows, that would be the case that they, there are two problems with what I think is, is being said, and that is, one, for building and safety, there are, there's a limit to the number of things that we can do until we're permitted. And number two, the amazing profound capital expense before approval would be a very unwise investment move. And so the millions that have been poured into that place are still needing more improvement, which will come through building and safety, in terms of just the way that the structures are built. But the ones that are being used are fully enclosed and are, are in use of the combination now odor system. They will go, you know, these carbon scrubbers aren't just numbers. Each one of these scrubbers clears a room within a certain square footage and so forth. I'm not a scientist, that's pretty obvious here. But they're not just numbers. These are the numbers that are far and above what our scientific consultants have said is necessary to keep all odor out of that property and away from the neighboring property. And I would only say one more thing, which is simply that if that's the case, that odor is the main issue because there's a neighbor on either side, or more than one in this case, then, then I wonder how the neighborhoods in Casitas Pass, all residential, 100% residential, mostly single family homes, how the folks near Carpentry High School are all still smelling weed every day that is during harvest season and sometimes during regular season, if somebody's light depping and so that they're able to have more than one harvest. So I, I, again, this is, this is new to me. The, the amount of, of planning going on to, to, to deal with this odor is, is actually quite stunning in this case. It's not the other way around. It's not inadequate.
Does Ms. Wooten have anything to add to that response?
No, the only thing I can add to that is as this is a legal non-conforming operator, yes, improvements to the greenhouses have been made over the years, to which they have been put, let's say the building permits have put, been put in an abatement status pending this appeal to get the actual building permits for it. But yes, things have been upgraded. We have, a majority of the bays are fully enclosed. Now there is only one that does not have a roof that needs to be replaced and that has not had any active cultivation in it for quite some time, well over, I, I think for at least three years since the roofs, the roof on that one had come down. So yeah, the improvements have physically been made, but everything is in a permit abatement status pending the approval or denial or working our way through this appeal to get to building for those appropriate active permit statuses.
Can you answer for us what cannabis is being grown at the present time, any place in the greenhouses?
Yeah, when you say what, do you, are you looking for like square footage?
Age of the plants, whether there is any harvesting.
Sure. Yeah, I believe that you're.
Let me, let me just finish your question, then you, you only have to answer it once. The odor abatement plan has, in my view, fallen, fall short of the requirements that we have for all of our applications. This is maybe the reason why you haven't had any complaints is that you're not operating. And, and the promise that you will operate in a certain way is what we're having to decide is sufficient at this point in time. So I'm trying to get as much information about the situation on site right at this time that the commission should know in order to be able to even make a fair judgment of whether the odor abatement system will operate as presented.
Understood. Yes, there is current cultivation. There was a harvest two weeks ago. There will be a harvest, I believe, in another couple of weeks. A full active nursery and active processing is being conducted. And what I'm wondering if maybe this current updated OAP may not be sufficient to your liking, the previous one, which was, did meet all the requirements of the Land Use Development Code, should we go back to that and maybe merge the two together to make sufficient findings? Just trying to figure out what would be best because this current OAP that's at your desk right now is the one that we updated and amended as suggested by your commission, that if we added carbon scrubbers, it would be sufficient to your commission's liking. So that is where I think we're at a, at a crossroads as well because the OAP that was the original approval was and does abide by all of the Land Use Development Codes.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly not going to advise you on what you might do to improve the opportunity for, for approval of the project, but I, I will say we're dealing with one odor abatement plan at this point and our decision today has to be based on that. But I appreciate you pointing out that there may be a difference between the operations today and the operations originally. That's just not before us at this time. So thank you.
Well, one more note, just because maybe I wasn't clear, the updated OAP with the addition of the carbon scrubbers still has the previously approved system in it. So it is a combination of both. And the operations today are no different than what it was two years ago, or four years ago, or six years ago. So I do want to make that clear, that during the, the growth cycle throughout the year, at any given month of, it will be different, but the scope of it is not. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So, so now we'll go back to, are there any comments right now? No, none. We'll go back to staff. Let's do it. If there's anything to add.
I have a question for Stan.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, public comment. I got public, I got public comment. I messed up here.
I can wait.
I was looking at something else, but, and I have to address this right away first, is that I see Mr. Norris, Jeremy? Okay. I have you as an applicant, as an appellant. Okay. So I, I can't, I want to make sure I address it because you did turn in one. I'm not trying to be discriminatory, but it's, your time was within the, the 10. Okay? Thank you. I just want to make sure. So let's go, is there anyone online?
Mr. Chair, I believe Ms. Emerson is for our next item. I just wanted, out of fairness, we have someone online, so if you're having trouble raising your hand, if you want to speak on this item, it's star nine to raise your hand on your phone. And I have a hand raised.
Is the hand raised now?
Yeah, yeah. I know sometimes people don't know how to raise their hand that way.
Okay. I guess we'll go on future instructions. It's star what?
So it's star nine to raise and lower your hand and it's star six to unmute yourself.
Okay. Okay, well, let's just take that person that's online and be.
Okay. Telephone speaker, go ahead. Just state your name before you start speaking, please.
All right. Good morning. My name is Jill Sistinos, and I want to thank Commissioners Cooney, Bridley and Martinez for supporting the Los Conchas Homeowners Association and their appeal of the proposed mixed light cannabis cultivation project at Island Breeze Farms at 3376 Foothill Road in Carpinteria. I appreciate the commissioners not allowing Island Breeze Farms to move forward with their cannabis cultivation project. And I do believe that the current odor abatement plan that they've been discussing does not have any, a plan for nurseries number four and five. I also am hopeful that for them to move forward, that they, if they do get approval to move forward, that at least we appeal, well, the appeal is, this whole project is postponed until Supervisor Lee is seated and that he can also weigh in on this project. But again, I, I basically am calling in just to thank the commissioners who are supporting the appeal and tell them how much I really appreciate this. It's been a very long time that I've been working on these projects and these appeals. And it's true, there is, continues to be a lot of odor in our area. And I am a resident in the area of this particular project, Island Breeze Farms, and I play tennis at the polo field. Well, not the polo field, but the Santa Barbara Polo and Racquet Club. So I do have a vested interest in the outcome of this appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So now we'll move to those who are here. There's four speaker slots I have here. And again, it's be limited to three minutes. And then you have Paul Roberts. And please announce yourself when you begin speaking. And then Paul Roberts will be found, will be followed by Anna Correa.
Good morning. I'm Paul Robertson. I'm here to support the appeal. I live in the area. I've lived in the area for 30 or 38 years. I'm well familiar with the roadway. During recovery from surgery, I walked by the roadway. I under, I, I smelled the smell. I wouldn't, I wouldn't return walking there. It, it's, we have visitors who complain about it. And so it's, it's a continuing problem ever since it began. And to ask a resident to, to find the source of a particular odor is, if you know the way that those, those greenhouses are protected, that, that you can't get in there. You can't, there are guards at the gate. I understand that, people employed there, but we can't find the source. If I'm permitted to find the source, if I get the magic badge and can go in, I'll do it. That, when it comes to the, the suggestion that there haven't been any complaints with respect to, to Island View Ranch and, and Island Breeze Farms, here's a complaint filed by your county, our county. I don't, the fact that there's a confidential settlement of this, this, this case gives me no comfort. I've been practicing law since 1977 here. I know about confidential settlements. They're, they're all great and there's a policy reason for doing them, but when it comes to the, a, a, a operator who is polluting our air, this goes out the window. This is about our health. It's about our community. It's about people of every variety. And the fact that, that counsel for the applicant says, everybody else got to do it, what about us? If you, if you call this air and this odor pollution, which that's what I think it is because I smell it when I get up in the morning, if you think of it as pollution, then everybody else has gotten to pollute, why not us? That, I mean, that's just, that doesn't ring true to me. It's not, it's not a logical argument. And when I think of who the applicant is and what they're trying to do to, to our little community, and I love it there, it's, I'm asking for you to protect us because we're here, and when I signed this, the little sign up sheet, it said, "on behalf of," and I thought I should write in "the air." No money. It's the air. If it was water, I'd write "the water." So I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm here in person for a reason because I, I don't want you to think there is complaint fatigue. There isn't in our household and there isn't among our neighbors. They just, they don't have the stamina or wherewithal, whatever, to be here. But I'm looking for all of you to support our Commissioner Cooney because I think he's appropriately identified the weaknesses in this proposal. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
I have a question for the speaker.
Sure.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Robertson. What is, what is your street address of your residence?
I'm at 1932 Paquita. So from the top of my driveway, I can see the rooftop of the greenhouse.
Thank you.
So next is Anna Correa, followed by Jessica Norris.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Anna Correa. Please uphold the appeal of this cannabis operation and support the negative findings that there is inadequate information in the OAP to demonstrate that odors will not be experienced in residential zones. I have asked, and I asked this to Steve Connors many, many times, which greenhouses are being currently used? Because in their permits, I mean, I went on the state license board and supposedly right now, the only active licenses they have is one for cultivation, one for processing and one for nursery. So which of the greenhouses, they have 11 greenhouses, they're planning to put in four carbon scrubbers in each greenhouse, which comes to a total of 44. And then I know Josh Lynn said last time that they were having to remove 603 square feet of the processing, and I don't know where that, you know, where that is. And then remember, residents smell this 24/7. So it's not like the workers are there and they have it to deal with it, but it's the residents who live nearby there. There are two, you know, we already have saw from Mr. Gettys, you know, all the cannabis operations that are in the same, you know, area. Los Conchas has 139 condominiums with over 300 residents. And now we also have the new development on the other side of the polo field, Santa Barbara Polo Villas, 40 of them being constructed as we speak. So that's probably another 100 people that are right there, another, you know, you're not going to call it an EDRN because I think that's an old established term, but you've got a lot of residents that are right there in the vicinity, in addition to the La Marada, which seems to be getting, you know, all the complaints or all the odors because it's traveling up the hill. So you have them across the street and then you have them, you know, down the street. So, and again, Los Conchas, not Los Conchas, sorry, Highland Breeze is going to be adding to these three active licenses because there were quite a few that were expired. And, and so they're going to be adding, you know, 10 new cultivation licenses, five more nursery licenses and one more processing license, according to what their, you know, projection, you know, is. And then of course, I, I mean, I've been here numerous, numerous times, you know, complaining that we're not able to pinpoint where the odor comes from. I mean, Director Lisa Plowman said, you know, we want to be able to do a fingerprint, you know, who's sending off, you know, this odor. So I applaud the commission for finally saying something that we can't identify where the odor is coming from. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now on to Jessica Norris, followed by Vicki Norris.
Hi, my name is Jessica Norris and I'm against this cannabis cultivation project and expansion. It's too close to the hundreds of residents that live next door, which include kids, elderly and people like myself who have health conditions that are triggered by the smell. I have battled and survived stage four cancer and extremely sensitive due to the high risk treatments that also saved my life. More migraines and feeling nauseous due to the cannabis smell will have a negative impact on my quality of life. Their lawyer was just speaking and said that when he drives around the Carpinteria cannabis projects, he smells it everywhere and he's absolutely right. These projects do not properly contain the smell. The air is saturated and it's gotten completely out of control. And to that, I say two wrongs don't make a right. We sincerely ask you to please deny their expansion and keep clean air in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our last speaker would be.
Hi, my name is Vicki Norris and I just, everyone has, you know, had their say and I, I'm a neighbor. And I, I'm a neighbor. I live in very close proximity. And I have to say that the smell is constant. And, and it, it, I can't even sit out on my deck without smelling it. And the fact that this, the smell is so bad, so let's make it, let's expand it and make it worse, you know, makes absolutely zero sense to me. I too have, am affected in my health. I, I get migraine headaches and this is a contributing factor. And I, I love my community. I love the farm that I'm so lucky to get to live on. And the fact that this affects so many people in the polo club and all of these people are affected in a negative way. And there is this one company that's going to profit and expand the nuisance of the smell. Just, it's, it's just seems wrong. And I'm asking if, I'm asking to please deny this, this expansion of this cultivation. Thank you.
Thank you. So that completes our public comment. And with that, I'm going to go to staff to see if there's...
Mr. Chair, before you move on, I just wanted to point out, just make a statement for, because I noticed that we have a new person online, that the chair did cut off some of the new public comment by the end of staff presentation.
I'm sorry? That somebody came on after? Well, that's the rule. Yeah. Okay. So, staff?
We don't have anything to add.
Okay. And Commissioner Park?
Yeah, and I assume we're at staff questions now, questions for staff?
Sure.
I have a practical question for you. And, and it relates to the OAP and just what it is and then what are some of the consequences as we proceed forward. We asked the applicant to revise the OAP to include carbon scrubbers. And I assume that came back not as a revised conditions of approval, but as a revised project description, right? Yes. Okay. This matter is, is likely to go to the board as an appeal. That, the board's authority there will be to treat it as a de novo hearing, just as we do, correct? And so is it possible that on appeal to the board, that the applicant may in fact revise their project description once again and delete the carbon scrubbers?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Park, what was the very last part you said?
Is it possible on appeal, and as part of their overall strategy, it's up to the applicants, that they might in fact delete the carbon scrubbers as a, for their project description?
Commissioner Park, it is a de novo hearing. So I, I think that is a possibility that they could do that, yeah.
Okay. And, and I'll refer to that again when we get to deliberations, Commissioner Martinez. But my question's done for now.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
I think we heard it from public comment that when staff tried to do an inspection in the last period since our last hearing, that you were informed by the applicant. What exactly? Can you clarify that when you went out to the site? The concomitant flu of everybody on staff?
That is correct. We were told that...
Yeah, I thought the public comment was that Mr. Connor went out there to try to do an inspection or a site visit.
We scheduled an inspection and it was canceled.
Because what was the explanation? That everybody has the flu at the same time?
Their entire staff had caught the flu.
Okay. So when is the last time that someone from P and D has been out to the greenhouse to take a look at it? Can anybody tell me that?
We'd like to confirm with compliance staff, but I think it was sometime in the spring or early summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Done. Okay. So the appellate has some time left if they want to use it or they don't have to, but it's up to you.
Mr. Chair, I have a minute and a half for the appellate and five and a half minutes for the applicant.
Correct. It's a minute and a half left.
Thank you. Mark Brickley again. Just wanted to clarify the last site visit that I'm aware of by Planning and Development. Mr. Connor had told me that it was May 2nd. And certainly that's something that can be checked. But Mr. Connor tried to make a visit to Island Breeze this month, but was told that everyone at the facility had the flu and a site visit could not be scheduled. I, I'd just like to say that in regard to the OAP, we have presented on our PowerPoint presentation, information that the OAP does not include verifiable results, that the odors will not be detected or experienced by residents of Los Conchas. And I think that's, that has been made clear by the applicant's comments. I just want to say that I have during the last month periodically but regularly experienced cannabis odors from my front door and from the parking lot without a breeze blowing. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can take the last thirty seconds?
No, I'm sorry. That was, he took the full minute and a half.
Okay.
Oh, there was a mix-up.
Yeah, no. So the timer only goes for full minutes, but he used the whole minute and a half.
Okay, thank you. So this goes over to the applicant now. If the applicant has anything to add, say, or...
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. I'll keep this brief. I know we've been going around and around here. I just want to mention, you know, when, when we had our, our speaker, who is an attorney, say that confidential settlements don't make him feel better. It's not confidential. I announced at the last hearing that the settlement was very simple. The settlement was in, in the likes of, there was a mistake made, we dismiss. That's all. There wasn't a dollar that changed hands. There was no conditions that changed. There was no conditions on either side. It was simply dismissed with prejudice out of hand by the county. I just want that to be really clear on the record for everybody who didn't hear it last time. And then the, one of the challenges for applicants is, is of course feeling bad about anybody who, who is having issues. I don't doubt at all that Mr. Brickley is smelling marijuana where he lives. Not at all. I'm just saying it's not coming from Islandview. And if it was, it would be taken care of by these two hundred scrubbers. So I don't know where the number four comes from. That's just a number. But there are two hundred. There are fifty-eight extra than the ones that this very commission asked us to buy and to augment the plan. The other thing I just point out is because the other odor abatement plant still exists, it still must be considered. So now we have two odor abatement plans, one that augments the other. I don't know of any other farm, there probably is one, but I don't know of any other farm that has such a sophisticated system that can be merged and a scientist to do so. And so while I very much respect all of these comments about how it smelled heretofore, it is a legal non-conforming grow at this stage, maybe the last one in the county. And for that reason, the, these things haven't been fully implemented because you can't possibly spend that kind of investment when you don't know whether it's just going to evaporate because of an appeal like this. And the, the only other thing that I have to say is, is just a reminder that in my humble legal opinion, it is a ministerial issue and that unless the odor complaints can be directed and proven to be from this farm, then they're like every other odor complaint that unfortunately hasn't been able to be pinpointed yet. And that combined with our two OAPs, an enhanced OAP that is sophisticated as we can make it. It may not answer every question that people have, but that's because we, we never know what, what question somebody's going to have. But it is an enhanced OAP. The other one must still be considered, in my view, and because it's still ongoing and it still exists at the farm. And so I, what I'm trying to say is this farm has literally done everything in the last two years to try to get to a point where it had played fairly and played ball with every request made by the planning and development, by the planning commission more recently. And to have it, the appeal granted and our project denied now is, is difficult because we feel that we were given direction and that we took that direction incredibly seriously. And, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to touch on one thing about the site visits, if you don't mind. Because this currently was in between harvest, limited staff. So yeah, the, the staff that got the flu, there was only three of them on site last week when the site visit was canceled. And then the additional request came yesterday when nobody was available. So I also can prove, this is why I'm not on video, I am also battling a cold right now. So unfortunately, things happen, but the, the site visit, it was set for last Thursday and then an additional request for yesterday. So those, that, those are the situations around the site visit cancellations.
Okay. I don't know if there's any questions of you right now. Commissioner Cooney, your light's on. And it's off. So there's no...
I have no questions at this time.
So I have no questions right now and...
Chair, I think staff had a comment.
Okay.
Thank you. We just wanted to clarify a couple of points. So the revised odor abatement plan that was provided by the applicant and presented to your commission on October 9th included forty-four additional carbon filters. Wanted to just clarify that number of filters. And also wanted to clarify that after a cannabis project is approved, it's subject to the standard conditions of approval, which require quarterly OAP inspections. So if this project is approved, it would be subject to the quarterly OAP inspections.
And, and this, this appellate isn't, or no, not appellate, applicant, they do have ongoing operations right now, correct?
Correct. Yeah, they're operating under legal non-conforming status.
Okay. And so the new odor abatement program would actually be, augment the existing odor abatement plan that, that is currently addressing their current operations. Is that correct?
Right. They would be required to implement the proposed OAP that was provided on October 9th because that's what is currently a part of their project. So they'd need to implement that as part of their approval.
Okay. Thank you. Deliberations, if anyone? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this is our second review of the Island View project. And at the first hearing, a couple of months ago, I found the odor abatement plan, which is kind of what we depend on to deal with the, the side effects of cannabis in the Carpinteria Valley. And, and I found it wanting in terms of information. I think the attorney for the applicant made the point that we've been letting other projects go forward. So if there's smell anyplace else, you know, that's, that's on us. And the problem we, we have acknowledged, staff has acknowledged, our director has acknowledged, I'm sure the board would acknowledge, is not a perfect system for approving the growing of cannabis. My thought at this point is that we don't make matters worse by allowing this project to go forward because others have been successful in doing that and are operating and are creating difficulties, not only for people who might be sensitive, but just ordinary people trying to live out their lives in the Carpinteria Valley. My feeling is that we should not approve this project. We sought in our first motion that staff would present us with findings for denial. Staff has done that. I could read the findings that are necessary. I don't know if, if you wanted to put them up on the screen, if that's easy to do. At the appropriate time, I would make a motion that we make these findings and uphold the appeal, deny the project, and move forward. If the commission, if any of the commissioners would like to have a brief break at this point, I would support that. But if we're ready for deliberations to continue, that's fine too.
Let me address that first question. So how do the commissioners feel? Let me see if, here for me, regards to whether we should take a break right now, ten-minute break, and then come back with deliberations or move into deliberations? Commissioner Park?
I'd prefer to continue with the deliberations and finish with the matter. I've kind of put some thoughts in my head and to wander off for ten minutes and hope that even half of them come back.
Well, we know, you know what that codes for from Commissioner Park? Ten times two. Just kidding. I'm kidding. Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, unless someone has, is in a state of biological urgency, I would prefer to continue.
Forget the suggestion, no problem.
So we'll go into deliberations then, obviously. And Commissioner Reed, your light's still on. I don't know if you want to be the second one up for the...
I think I turned mine on first, but that's...
Okay, that's fine. Then let's go to you.
Okay. All right. You know, we first heard this on June 26th. At that time, we instructed applicant to go forth and prepare a better odor abatement plan, including scrubbers. They returned on August 9th. Well, no, they later returned October 9th with what I thought and what we examined at the meeting to be a pretty robust odor abatement plan with the addition of those forty-four scrubbers sufficient to produce four air changes per hour in the greenhouses and in their structures. I felt that was adequate at that time. But then emerged the issue, and you know, so, and I did not vote with the majority then. Applicant was in, staff was instructed at that time to go back, come back with findings of denial. So now we're faced with what we're looking at today. And in order to support those findings, denial, if we look at finding 2.1.2, you know, findings required for coastal development and what it really boils down to, that their odor abatement plan would be considered inadequate because there is not information to demonstrate that odors will not be experienced in a residential zone. I don't recall having seen that in previous appeals for other cannabis things. So I'd written a few key words down even before Attorney Lynn spoke. And one of those was uniformity. Is this enforced in every case, in all applications? I, I don't recall that being so. So that, that creates some uneasiness for me. And secondary to that feeling, if in fact it is being imposed on this applicant, is it indeed be, being arbitrary? Which I think is another thing that is, to me, unacceptable. Things need to be imposed uniformly across all projects, all applicants. And again, this standard, to demonstrate that odors will not be experienced in a residential zone, brings me back... zone, brings me back in the circle to the fact that if you have an odor, it's really difficult to determine where it's coming from. And I think even appellant's presentation showed six different entities producing cannabis in that immediate area. Now, if it were possible to absolutely eliminate all other producers so that Island Breeze was the only one in existence, then it would be simple to determine if the odors were coming from them. And I suspect it's a mixture from all of those. So to me, I'm just not comfortable holding Island Breeze accountable for that. It smacks to me of, since this was just introduced at this meeting, like with the climate action plan, moving the goalposts, moving the thresholds throughout the process. And I don't think moving the goalposts is an acceptable action that we should be seen doing. So I find that I cannot make that finding 2.1.2. I could not support denying, approving the appeal at this time. The only possible courses of action I could foresee, that I could live with, would be continuing this until, at such time the cannabis ordinances are refined to a point where there would be an acceptable reason for denial or an acceptable standard that the applicant could actually achieve. And the other thing would be to approve it based on findings I was comfortable with at the last hearing.
Well, I'll go next in regards to that. I can appreciate a lot of the comments that Commissioner Reed has made in regards to kind of being in between. I mean, like, we were just, last week, we were talking about the smell being seven over total, whatever it was, in regards to it. So obviously, there's going to be a smell situation. There's going to be an odor situation. Now we're hit with this, which is basically saying there's going to be zero. That is something that I think we need some clarification in regards to what we're going to be doing to the cannabis ordinance as to what we're now here. Because one's not, you're going from zero to something. But I'm not going to ignore the fact that we do have this existing ordinance now. It has been put in front of us, and it does say what it says. And I'm going to stop right there. So we have Commissioner Brightley or Commissioner Park?
First, if you want. I'd rather hear you first.
Commissioner Park.
I have a little under half a dozen points. I want to go through them carefully because I think this is a matter that will go to the board. It's a tricky matter, one where we have some disagreement between staff and the commission. That makes it trickier, and there's some other things there. And there's some legal issues. I first want to say, I appreciated hearing from Mr. Roberts. One, I just haven't seen you in a long time, and I recognize, where have we run into each other? Of course, we've known each other for 30 years, but that's where we're at. And I understand your frustration with the position of the litigation that was initiated by the county. But I think Mr. Lynn accurately points out that it was a dismissal with prejudice. And as Mr. Roberts knows, and as Mr. Lynn knows, all the attorneys here know, when there's a dismissal with prejudice, the cause of action that's brought by the county, the group of facts that supports the legal position they were taking in the complaint, can never be raised again. Okay? And that means that the specific relief asked for in that complaint is gone. It can never be raised again. That's what with prejudice means. And that anything that could have been brought up within that cause of action can never be raised again. So it certainly constrains what the county can deal with in terms of calling these folks a bad actor. And so it's not really part of my conclusions here. Could you put the slide back on, Mr. Villalobos of the statutory language? I think that Mr. Connor did a very good job of drafting findings for denial, especially on when we're, frankly, planning staff didn't agree with that finding. But I thought it was just very skillful, and I appreciated that. Because I will tell you, at that last hearing, I found the reasoning for the other commissioners to support denial to be, frankly, completely unpersuasive. They, I could not divine any legal basis. And I first heard the discussion for denial rest on the standard we have in 2.1.5 of findings for CUPs, except I thought it was pretty clear this wasn't a CUP case. So I was just perplexed. But now I see some language here that was brought to our attention. You know, I've brought it up there, but at least the idea for it was brought up by staff. The odor abatement plan must prevent odors from being experienced within residential zones as determined by the director. That's at least a plausible basis for a finding of denial, and I think that's a step up here. Okay? Now, on to some practical things. After we had our first case where an applicant asked for carbon scrubbers, and that was David and Cynthia Van Wingerton, I don't remember the name of the project. I'm sure Ms. Correa does. She remembers the name of all of them. But anyway, I don't remember the name of it, but that's when Mark Byers himself said the best way to handle this was a combination of scrubbers operating during the day to remove as much odor as possible. And then once the air was burped out, so to speak, for venting purposes, usually in the early hours of the morning, he'd have his Byers system to capture any other odors, to neutralize them. And ever since then, I have pushed for carbon scrubbers, often over the arguments of staff and other commissioners. But I've done it universally. I've not always been supported by the other commissioners. On Autumn Brands, for example, the other commissioners decided to vote that, no, we wouldn't require carbon scrubbers. On the easternmost grow we have, where there's actually two companies and two grows operating out of one building, and I'm sure, again, Ms. Correa knows exactly what I'm talking about, oddly, the commission, over my objections, voted to approve one without carbon scrubbers, and then a few weeks later, when the other one came in, to approve it with carbon scrubbers. And that's why I thought the practical solution was to always push for them, and we did. And this applicant said yes, and now we're, looks like we're on the verge of denying the project anyway. This is one of those be careful what you wish for moments, where this can go to the Board of Supervisors. The board will hear everything they've heard. They're going to get something different. And that is, they will get an opinion letter from County Council that is a confidential, attorney-client privileged document. It's exactly the right way it's supposed to work. We don't get that document, and that's just the way it works. Okay? We get very good advice at hearings from Ms. Richardson and others, but we don't get that letter that will say, here are some potential liabilities or potential problems. The board will have that, and so they'll have a different point of view, perhaps. And it just may be that the board, which has not always required carbon scrubbers, and has in fact, in numerous appeals, actually dropped them after we adopted them, you may see something where the applicant withdraws the carbon scrubbers from their OAP, from their project description, and where the board actually supports that. So for those that want to push forward with denial, you may actually be going backwards, and I hope you all realize that. I don't know the probabilities, but that's possible. This is a different application of the statutory language. This language, the odor abatement plan must prevent odors from being experienced with residential zones as determined by the director. I could easily argue that that puts the affirmative burden on the applicant to always come in and say there won't be odors. And frankly, if we had held to that standard, other than just looking at as a plan stamped by a hygienist, we probably shouldn't have allowed the approval of any of the LUPs for any of the growers that are in Carpinteria, but we haven't. Well, here, it looks like we will use this language for a finding of denial. And I kind of agree with Mr. Cooney that, you know, the law is such that if we didn't do it right 18 times, but we're ready to do it right the 19th time, that's okay. It may seem inconsistent, and maybe it is, but it's within the authority of the commission and the Board of Supervisors. I think this will obviously go before the Board of Supervisors. They'll have more information from County Council than we have here. The risk will be presented to them regarding carbon scrubbers, and if the first district wants is heard by the new incoming supervisor, then I go back to be careful what you wish for. This will be an interesting problem. So I'm at the point where I will, I can make the argument for either side based on that language, and just so this gets to the Board of Supervisors, I'm basically going to vote with the majority here. Okay? Because I have a plausible way to vote either way. We'll see what the majority is.
Thank you. Commissioner Brightley?
I always appreciate Commissioner Park's outline. That was very helpful for me to hear. I'm going to take it maybe one step higher because I completely concur with Commissioner Cooney that just because we did it as recommended by staff, and also Commissioner Park concurred, we don't have to do that now. And I have struggled in this cannabis program to find a way to work around this ordinance, which I think has been proven to be a failure based on the excessive public comment we have, the need to have the ordinance changes come back, and now even a change in the first district elected official. That was a big issue in that race. So I cannot support another CDP with limited discretion. And I'm going to go out on a limb here. There's a lot of other things that we have been forced to do that takes away our discretion. I mean, really serious things, like rezoning huge amounts of land area and taking away ag for housing and all kinds of things that we really didn't have a chance to have a lot of discretion over. And at every turn, I am faced with some other kind of state legislation that says, you can't even approve this. In fact, I just found out yesterday that the Hollister Lofts, a 35-unit, three-story building next to the fire station on Hollister Avenue, will now be a nondiscretionary item. We won't see that. That will go straight to plan check under another housing legislation. I honestly forget what number it was. So given the fact that we are told by staff that we have limited discretion, and it's only whether it's consistent with a comprehensive plan, or, you know, a couple other small findings, I particularly appreciate Commissioner Park putting up the language on the screen. If I had to do this over about two years ago, I would go through the comprehensive plan and find things that I still think that these cases are not consistent with, even as a land use permitter or CDP. But I failed to do that. I failed the community in doing that. I sort of failed my professional credo in doing that. But I'm not going to fail it again today. And I completely concur with Commissioner Cooney that just because we did it like this automatically, the world has changed. The world has changed by virtue of the cannabis ordinance now coming for a refreshed look by virtue of perhaps, you know, new technology. Okay, so carbon filters are great now. We didn't have those two years ago as a for-sure amendment. And a change in the political environment that is moving forward in '25. So with that, I would actually support a motion to approve the appeal and deny the project.
Okay. So I was just thinking to myself, if Commissioner Cooney actually made the motion, I know you were kind of ad-libbing it, but I'm thinking you did, but I wasn't too sure.
I didn't intend to do so without hearing from my fellow commissioners. I did indicate I would move forward with the findings for denial prepared by staff and ask that they be put on the board. So I can understand that it was confusing. I'm tempted to enter into a debate with my fellow commissioners, but it's not going to make any difference. If this goes to the Board of Supervisors, that's our system. And all we can do is do our best to give them a record to operate under. And I'm sure that the first district will be well-served by any discussion that the board enters into with respect to our decision. But since I first read the one odor abatement plan that was planned for this project, I found much wrong with it. And admittedly, I did not feel like I should vote differently simply because we had done so, or at least it could be argued that we had done so in other projects throughout the valley. We've had a lot of lessons to learn about governing cannabis operations, and even some of the growers have regretted that they got into the business, which has turned out not to be a finding of gold in their change from flowers to growing cannabis. But that's the world we live in. It's changing all the time. It is my conviction that the right thing to do in this case is to uphold the appeal of neighbors to this particular project, to have the practical, on-the-ground awareness of the nuisance that they perceive. And we have only to recognize that, deny this project, and hope that the board gives it the same attention that we have. So my motion for consideration by the Planning Commission is to uphold the appeal in case 23 APL 00014, make the required findings for denial of the project as specified in Attachment A of the memorandum dated November 5. Determine that denial of the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to State SEQA Guidelines Sections 15061B4 and 15270A included as Attachment B to this memorandum dated November 5, 2024, and deny the project. Case 19 CDP, Zeros 39.
I'll second.
Okay. With a second, do we have any discussion to add to it?
Yeah, I have a request of you, Chair Martinez. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it kind of helps. I'm not sure, when you previously spoke, whether you were expressing support for denial or support for the project.
That's a new, support for the denial.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. With that, no further discussion, then we'll just do a roll call. Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brightley?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
No.
Chair Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Okay. With that, we'll take a short 10-minute break before we go into our next and last matter. Thank you.
Okay, good morning again, and we're back in our second session for this morning part of our meeting, and we have one item left on our agenda, but before we move on to that, we will have our director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I just have a very quick report this morning. I wanted to update the Planning Commission. We did see five different appeals on the Miramar action, so the staff is going to be assessing the appeal issues. We are working towards getting that to the Board on December 10th, so I will keep you posted if that changes. It just really depends on the complexity of the issues raised and how different they are. As I mentioned previously, the Board hearing locations have been adjusted for December. The 3rd of December is going to be in Santa Maria, the 10th is in Santa Barbara, and of course, the Board set a special hearing for the 17th of December as well because they had their agendas were just getting overfilled, and they weren't going to be able to accommodate all of the items. So that'll be in Santa Barbara. In terms of upcoming Board items, we have the coastal zone ordinance amendment package going to the Board on the 3rd of December. Then we have the Ag Enterprise Ordinance continued to the 10th of December. We're going to hear the extension of the temporary moratorium on mobile home parks, also on the 10th of December. There is an appeal of an H-LAC nomination on a property in East Valley Road, 2929. The property owner is appealing the H-LAC determination, and that goes on the 10th. We have the Blanco appeal that goes on the 10th. So we have a very busy day on the 10th, and that's pretty much all I have for you today. We have a busy December. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, I mean, you just named three things that could take at least half a day, all on the 10th. And I don't know how the Board agenda works. When they're doing ordinance things like AEO, is that going to come before or after the Miramar and Blanco appeals?
We usually take those after. We take the Ag Enterprise ordinance amendments come after the appeals because you have members of the public trying to... Well, we'll have members of the public here on that, too. I'd have to ask the Chair on how he would want to manage that calendar. I'm trying to move the Blanco appeal, but we have a party that may not be able to do that. So we're doing the best we can to cut down the day. It's already almost eight hours on the 10th at the Board. It's a long day.
If you're lucky. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your report, Pam.
So now, if we can move on to the second and last item, and again, I'll announce that if anyone from the public or out there that wishes to speak on this last item, the time to raise your hand online or turn in your speaker slips here today is before staff finishes their presentation. Once they finish their presentation, that's it. Ms. Velez, I'm going to ask you to make sure that if you could explain how a person can raise their hand if they're on the phone or online, so there's no confusion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So if anyone is joining us via telephone, the way that you raise your hand virtually is to hit star nine on your phone.
All right. And so let's, if you could announce our second item.
Yes, thank you. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department that the County Planning Commission consider case number 24 GPA 1, 2, as well as case numbers 24 ORD 1 and 3, as well as changes to the Old Town Orchid Design Guidelines and Los Alamos Bell Street Design Guidelines for consistency with the ordinance amendments.
Okay. So we don't have to go through any ex-party communications since this is an ordinance amendment, so we'll go straight to staff.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Chair. Alex Suttle with Long Range Planning, and I have Ben Singer here, ready to present. This effort has been a long time in the making. We've been... There's been interest in updating our sign regulations and our lighting regulations for quite some time, so we're happy to be here and excited to move this project along.
Let there be light.
We were having issues again this morning. I have it on the other desktop.
Okay, got it figured out. Good morning, Chair Martinez and Commission members. I am before you today to present the outdoor lighting, signs, and miscellaneous ordinance amendments. I'll be going over all of the amendments pretty broadly, and we can get into any specifics the Commission wants to explore further at the end. And then this project was continued from the September 25 hearing, which is why the presentation is dated September 25, but it was at that time continued without being actually read in, or heard, rather. As the title of it implies, there are three parts to this ordinance. Each one has a different purpose. The outdoor lighting amendments are to create a consistent set of regulations around lighting that are easy to use and set a standard for dark sky compliance. The sign amendments will modernize the sign regulations, removing out-of-date language and make them easier to interpret and apply. And the miscellaneous updates will clarify and modernize a few different sections of the code so that interpreting and processing of projects is easier and more consistent, as well as removing some outdated noticing requirements and adding some language to help with the enforcement of short-term rentals and home stays. Starting off with the outdoor lighting amendments, we have the existing LUDC language shown here. For the county at large, it's pretty minimal, only requiring that lighting be hooded and directed away from residential development, and that it doesn't interfere with vehicular traffic. There are a lot more requirements and standards in the LUDC for the Gaviota, Eastern Greta Valley, Michigan Canyon, Santa Nez Valley, and Summerland Community Plan areas, though. So each of those has additional requirements. The existing coastal zoning ordinance requirements are very similar. They're just worded a little bit differently, and they include lighting being directed away from environmentally sensitive habitat. There are similarly additional standards in the different community plan overlay zones in the coastal area. Getting into the proposed lighting regulations, we took a lot of the language from those community plan areas mentioned and expanded upon it. So there will be exemptions for certain lights, meaning they don't need to meet the standards of the code section. Some of the exemptions are traffic lights, temporary lights for construction or emergencies when there's a public agency involved with it, temporary seasonal light decorations, and very low output lights, which we have defined as 60 lumens or less, as well as a few other exemptions. We're also proposing prohibiting search, strobe, and laser lights, mercury vapor lights, and uplighting. The Montecito Planning Commission recommended allowing some uplighting in the coastal zone, which I will cover more in a few slides. The new ordinance will establish a host of new regulations, including maximum light levels with specifics for environmentally sensitive habitat areas, the buffers around those areas, as well as maximum light levels at property lines, which are based on what that zone is and what the development of the property is. There are new general requirements that all lights be fully shielded or full cutoff. There are maximum height requirements for lights, which are different depending on if the light is mounted on a building or is freestanding. There's a maximum Kelvin for lighting set at 4,000 for security lights and 3,000 for all other lights. And I've included this picture of the Kelvin scale so you can get a sense of what that entails, because it's not something that you usually interact with very much. The ordinance also has requirements on timing of lights, so when lights have to be turned off, or at least on a motion sensor and automatic shut-off. And then there are new definitions so that everything included in this is clearly defined. Moving into signs, the existing LUDC regulations have quite a bit more for signs than they do for lighting, so the LUDC includes prohibited signs, exempt signs, permit requirements, general standards, what signs are allowed in different zones, non-conforming sign requirements, and provisions for violation and enforcement of signs. The coastal zoning ordinance has a lot less for signs. It basically just refers the reader to Article 1 of the county code, though it has real regulations for signs for the Summerland area. Article 1 is the coastal sign ordinance and was adopted on April 27, 1970, and was last updated on November 7, 1995. So it is a little old for an ordinance to be still in use. It does include some of the same regulations, like prohibited signs, exempt signs, permit requirements, and allowable signs by zone, but it also has zone districts that no longer exist, and a lot of kind of vagr requirements that could really use an update. The updated sign regulations will expand the exemptions and prohibitions that are currently in the code, adding more modern signs, as well as including some specifics regarding coastal access. New clearer sign measurement standards are also included, some of which I've shown here just as an example. And there are new general standards proposed, such as requirements for sign materials, clearance, illumination, and changeable copy standards. The sign allowances are changing a little bit. Currently, sign allowances are based on zone, but the proposed version will be based on development type, the main types being residential, commercial, industrial, and other non-residential. Another change is that non-conforming signs are proposed to be treated the same as other non-conforming structures, where the use is allowed to continue so long as the nonconformance is not exacerbated. There are also new maintenance standards to ensure that signs are kept in good condition. We are proposing some changes to the permits for signs, which are signed certificates of conformance, and overall sign plans. Included in this is the deletion of the sign modification permit. The provisions of that are just part of the overall sign plan permit type now. And finally, like the outdoor lighting, there are new and updated definitions so that everything is also clearly defined. Getting into the miscellaneous changes, we have clarified standards for varying side and rear setbacks, as well as allowances for accessory structures in setback areas. The image here shows some of that, and these changes will help the Planning Department be more consistent with our permit processing. We also have clarified the standard for interior lot setbacks and how they are applied. We are proposing for pool cabanas to remove the specific dimensions for pool length, width, and depth that are required to apply for a cabana. We're also proposing to remove the requirement for noticing of certain exemptions, and including new enforcement language about the advertisement of lodgings, specifically home stays and short-term rentals. To go with these ordinance amendments, we're proposing minor changes to the Old Town Orchid Design Guidelines and the Los Alamos Bell Street Design Guidelines. These are changes based on the proposed sign ordinance amendments to Section 7, signage and lighting of the Orchid Guidelines, and Section 6, signs, and Section 8, supplemental of the Los Alamos Guidelines. The changes will update references and delete some lines to rely purely on the ordinance for the actual regulation of signs. The style sections of the guidelines are not changing. We're also proposing two comprehensive plan amendments for consistency with these ordinances. The first is to the Santa Nez Valley, Los Alamos, and Eastern Greta Valley Community Plans of the Land Use Element, so this is the inland area. The changes are briefly listed here and are primarily minor changes to visual development standards, also to refer to and rely on the ordinance for the regulation of outdoor lighting. A development standard in the Eastern Greta Valley Plan will be deleted because it calls for the adoption of lighting requirements like those proposed today. And Attachment H of the Santa Nez Valley Plan will be deleted because it is lighting requirements for that area, so the ordinance will supersede and take over for that. The second comprehensive plan amendment is to the Coastal Land Use Plan and the Eastern Greta Valley Community Plan within that, and it is just the application of the changes I just mentioned to the coastal portion of that community plan, so it's the same changes. The ordinance amendments were heard by the Montecito Planning Commission, and they recommended approval of the amendments with a few revisions. Those revisions are detailed in the memo that I docketed prior to the September hearing, but I'll go over them quickly as well. They are, one, to allow for uplighting of specimen trees and the United States flag with a cumulative limit of 500 lumens of light per tree or flag. Two, requiring that string lights be hooded when they are installed outside of landscaping. Three, clarifying that the 60-day limit on seasonal lighting is for usage of the lights, not just having them put up. And four, requiring that lights are not directed towards the ocean explicitly. As part of your recommendation to the Board, the Commission can accept, reject, modify, accept some of, but not other parts of the Montecito Planning Commission's recommendations. The LUDC amendments, which are case number 24 ORD 1, the Land Use Element Amendment, which is case number 24 GPA 1, and the Orchid and Los Alamos Design Guideline Amendments can be found exempt from environmental review pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section 15061B3, which is the common sense exemption. The coastal zoning ordinance amendment, which is case 24 ORD 3, and the Coastal Land Use Plan Amendment, which is case 24 GPA 2, can be found exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section also 15061B3, as well as 15265, which exempts the preparation of a local coastal Before getting into the actions, I did also docket a memo for you last week with some minor changes. Just to go over those quickly, they included deleting some conflicting language about ADUs in the rear setback, so that was kind of just a small cleanup item in the coastal zoning ordinance, clarifying and simplifying the definition of an interior lot in the coastal zoning ordinance and LUDC, and then adding in the lighting-related definitions to the LUDC, which were inadvertently omitted from the previous draft that was docketed. The recommended actions for your commission this morning are to make the required findings for approval, including SEQA findings, and recommend that the Board make the required findings for case numbers 24 ORD 1, 24 ORD 3, 24 GPA 1, and 24 GPA 2. Recommend that the Board find the project exempt from SEQA, and then adopt five resolutions to recommend that the Board approve the LUDC amendments. Recommend the Board approve the coastal zoning ordinance amendments. Recommend the Board approve the land use element amendments. Recommend the Board approve the coastal land use plan amendments. And recommend that the Board revise the Old Town Orchid Design Guidelines and Los Alamos Bell Street Design Guidelines. And again, your actions should include what you want to do with the Montecito Planning Commission's recommended changes. That concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions. Our consultant to help develop these ordinance amendments, Martha Miller, is also available via Zoom to help answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for staff right now? Commissioner Park?
Yes. I'm going to follow the pagination of your presentation. So the first thing I come to is on slide 10, at the very bottom, there's a reference to home stay slash short-term rental enforcement, added language for enforcement of lodgings based on advertisements. I just didn't understand what you were talking about. I wonder if you could elaborate.
Yes, Commissioner Park through the chair. That was a couple of lines added at the behest of our Enforcement Division. It's something to the effect of advertisement of a short-term rental or home stay is evidence of a violation. So if you put up an advertisement saying you can rent my home, it's an Airbnb, and you have not gotten a permit for that, that advertisement can be part of the violation.
And that's referring to... I was trying to figure out that related to signs or lighting.
Commissioner Park through the chair.
You have two, okay, but...
Doesn't.
And so it could mean advertisement on the internet and different services. I get that, and it's all logical. I have had conversations with enforcement in the past on home stays, and as to whether they were in operation or not, and I was concerned that there was an overreliance on advertisements as the defining factor of whether they exist or not. And I've even talked to real estate brokers who tell me how some of the illegal home stay operations advertise only on weekends so that they're not caught at the time that we look for advertisements online and things like that. So it's a complicated matter. I just want to be sure that these new changes here, new language, don't provide that the only proving factor for whether there's a home stay in operation is that it's being advertised. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Because sometimes they operate and they don't advertise that way. You're not catching it. It doesn't mean they're not doing it.
Yes. Commissioner Park through the chair. It is not going to be the sole part I cannot speak to how enforcement might use it, but it's to codify that they can use the advertisement of it.
Yeah, okay.
As part of their investigation.
Well, let me move on, on to slide 14, okay? And you asked us to indicate what we thought of the MPC recommendations. I don't really have anything to say about most of them. I do about number one. Number one, I'm going to refer to both the correspondence from Nancy Emerson into my own observations. Nancy Emerson, as many of us know, has been a constant and patient proponent of a lighting ordinance for more than a decade, and no one ever disagreed with her. It was just a matter of allocation of staff time for LRP when we look at what the staffing allocations are. So I think it's great that we've got a lighting ordinance. Dan Blau always referred to it as, why don't we just get a lighting ordinance so we don't have to have individual findings each time we have a project? So it's wonderful. But Nancy, who has the benefit of a great deal of wisdom, has commented on behalf of WeWatch and Dark Sky International, et cetera, that they do not support the uplighting of specimen trees and the flag, okay? I can tell you from my own personal experience, because I don't actually know anyone else who's spent as many hours in the dark, hiking, horseback, mountain biking, above Montecito looking down at it, that, you know, you can see uplighting. It's not just a matter of what you can see towards the ocean and this, this, and that, but it would be noticeable. And there are folks in Montecito or from Montecito who might even be in my neighborhood who will use uplighting to a degree that many of us would be surprised, okay? And so I don't want to argue with them about how many specimen trees are on their property, what's a specimen tree. I do not support that. That's just me. Okay, let's move on. 16. Where did we go here? I thought I heard you, when you were on 16, which is your last slide, saying something about ADU placement and setbacks, or did I just mishear you?
Commissioner Park through the chair, that's correct. There's...
Correct that I misheard you, or that you did say something?
That I did say something.
Oh, good. Well, we do elaborate on that, because I didn't catch it again.
Yes, there's, I think, one line in the coastal zoning ordinance about ADU placement in the rear setback that conflicts with a later discussion of that in the ordinance, so we're just striking that line from the ordinance as part of this miscellaneous part of the updates.
Got you. But we don't have language in there that's modifying the LUDC regarding placement of ADUs on lots that are two acres or larger, or even half acre or larger that we've had for years, and Mr. Tuttle knows I always fight to keep them in there.
Commissioner Park through the chair.
No, we're no changes to the LUDC. This is really just a cleanup in the coastal zone.
I rest my case. Thank you. I'm going to ask my question pretty quick here. On page 3, you're talking about unobstructed beam of exterior lights. Are you talking about streetlights, too? That kind of stuff?
Chair Martinez, streetlights, I believe, are...
Are those counted as exterior lights?
They are, but they are specified in some other portion of it, I believe, either exempt or specifically mentioned.
Okay, so they're not going to be... I'm just thinking in the sense of purpose of lights that outline a street where you can see both sidewalk and the street, which is obviously a purpose and a safety issue, and that this one saying it can't be towards the development, towards a house or anything of the sort, this is not addressing that kind of situation that I'm just describing, correct?
Correct. We still, you know, I don't know that we would want streetlights pointed directly at a house, but that's not something that happens, so streetlights pointed downward.
No, I wouldn't want a street lamp directed at a house, but obviously, a street lamp highlights the road and the adjacent sidewalk in most instances, so you can see people that are on the sidewalk thinking of crossing in front of the traffic. So I'm just making sure that we're not taking that element, because there's a purpose to these, to the lights that I'm describing.
Correct.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, streetlights would generally be covered by like the hooded and directed downward provision, but they have certain safety requirements that they have to comply with, and so this ordinance wouldn't interfere with that.
Because I keep on... I have just experienced this last night where I was driving through Santa Nez, and you could have the street lamp overhanging, but it didn't do darn good. I mean, it was so light in regards to dim, I should say, that it really didn't help me without me doing my high beams, but that's just my comment for the day. The other thing is, I noticed in here that there was a provision on page 8 of Attachment C1 about private recreational courts, private lighting of recreational... C1 about private recreational courts, private lighting of recreational sports courts shall be prohibited between the hours of 9:00 PM and sunrise. How did that come about? I mean, we're talking about, like, pickleball tennis courts? Or are we talking about country clubs, too, which is, can be deemed private? I mean, is that what we're talking about here?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, these would be, that provision is in particular to like sports courts, residential sports courts, so not a country club. We're talking about your tennis court or your pickleball court, your basketball court in your backyard or your front yard or whatever. And just for reference, in Montecito community plan area, you can't have any lighting of recreational sports courts. Elsewhere outside of Montecito, we've established that 9:00 PM cutoff.
Okay. Because I was just thinking, I mean, you can still be allowed until 10:00 PM under the law, technically speaking, but yet 9:00 PM would be lights out, but sound on. Okay. I was just making sure it wasn't applying to like tennis courts and so forth like that of country clubs. Okay, those were my questions. Commissioner Reed.
I've got a few questions, one from your presentation. A poolside cabana, how did that wind up in the sign and lighting ordinance?
Commissioner Reed through the chair, like a couple of the things that Commissioner Park brought up. We fit everything that we could into this ordinance, even if it wasn't directly related to signs or lighting, so things that we've been meaning to clean up for a while, put in this under the miscellaneous.
Due to the lighting it might have inside, is that what you're getting at?
Not exactly. More of just, we were doing miscellaneous changes already, so we could fit in the things that people have been asking for us to change for however long.
Commissioner Reed through the chair. It's just a common practice when we take forward ordinance amendments that we might often add on a little miscellaneous item here or there just as a cleanup item unrelated to the primary ordinance amendment. So that's the case here, is a handful of miscellaneous.
Good. Then I have a couple, a few questions from the standards, the printed part. Okay, first, well, page 17, you know, sign standards, one, item D restricts signs that may create a nuisance to nearby properties, violate privacy, or create hazards or unreasonable distractions for pedestrians and drivers. I'm going to use that later on. Second, on page 19, says no trespassing signs, they may not be more than one square foot in area. Well, it's not uncommon to see at the entrance to like an industrial site or energy site, you have a sign at the entrance, it'd be no trespassing, but then we'll go on to list a number of other things that are allowed or prohibited and contacts and stuff. Often those signs are bigger than one square foot. Do they get exempt from this, or are you just talking about no trespassing signs you have along the fence of your ranch?
Commissioner Reed through the chair, that's meant to reflect the no trespassing signs you buy and put on your fence. The larger ones for like an industrial site would be more in line with the informational sign type.
Okay. Okay, another question, also on page 19, political, social issue and other non-commercial signs, they shall be exempt from all regulations of this chapter? So if you have a political sign or a philosophical sign or a religious sign, it can be any size you want and have lighting or? That's probably a legal requirement, I'm not certain, but if you have any information on the genesis of that one?
Commissioner Reed through the chair, as an example, that wouldn't have lighting, wouldn't be allowed to have lighting, but it is in protection of free speech protections for that. But our consultant can also speak to that a little bit more if you'd like to hear more.
So they can be oversized and, you're just saying you can't, you're not regulating them at all?
Correct. And, you know, you may see, leading up to an election, often large vote for this person signs that are kind of larger, and we're trying not to touch that.
All right. Now, just moving on to the, I had a couple, prohibitions, page 20, animated or moving signs, animation, moving, reflecting, blinking, would that also include those giant illuminated animated billboards that I find so distracting next to the freeway down in LA?
Commissioner Reed through the chair, if they're animated, you know, have.
They're basically a giant LCD like that, only billboard-sized with ads on them, moving back and forth like a television.
Correct. That would be prohibited through that. There's also the later section for electronic messaging standards, that if they were a static image but electronically.
I see that. You also regulate the rate of change and all refresh. Another thing, B, also under prohibitions, balloons, inflatable signs, streamers, that include those guys that are pumped up with the air, the fan and go up and down, and the feathers, and other attention-getting devices? Does that also include these guys sign waivers out on the corner with their sign going back and forth? That's a big distraction. Is that included in this, or does that slip by? I see most of those in town, not too many in the county, but is this also encompassed that, because that is a distracting attention-getting device, which is the basis, why they have the sign to get attention? But is it overlooked or eliminated or allowed?
Commissioner Reed through the chair, could we have our consultant, Martha Miller, respond to that?
Okay.
Hi, thank you. Martha Miller with Miller Planning Associates. Yeah, that's generally included in that. That's a moving kind of sign. Sign allowances and sign regulations and different protections for free speech are pretty complicated and involved, so there are some nuances related to sign movers, but kind of generally in the umbrella application is that, yes, this does address that.
Okay, thank you. Only have two more. Okay. One, let's look at orchid, okay? Their orchid regulations, and I realize, the changes you have made to these are, I believe, to bring them into a line with county policy, okay? Because I see what's been admitted in terms of design character. Now, on page seven of that, they have a regulation, if they have a hanging sign, it needs to be at least eight feet higher than the sidewalk. You took that out?
Commissioner Reed through the chair, that's correct. That's a standard, the clearance is a standard in the new ordinance, so that, that being like a specific height standard.
So that's taken out, but it is retained in the ordinance, so.
Correct.
You're not going to walk down the street in orchid and hit your head on something. Okay, cool. One minor change right below that, this is in the paragraph SG3 lettering styles. Can you see that whole paragraph? One, two, three, four, five, line five of that paragraph, can you see that paragraph? The excerpt out of that ordinance?
If it will open for me, I'll be able to. If you'd like to continue on with your question, I can.
Well, the question's easy. It says, the sentence in the center of that paragraph, most of the styles were characterized by, it says, serfs. That means it should be serifs, S-E-R-I-F. A serf is a peasant, works in the field. A serif is the little, is the little feather on the end of a letter.
Yeah, if that was a.
If we clean that up by changing it to serif, I'd be real happy. Yeah, not a major one. And then I notice in the, let's go to the Los Alamos. Your excerpt for Los Alamos, in terms of signage, it says, you know, signs are, that's number five on the bottom page, signs are consistent with the county's sign ordinance, yes. And then it says, modern or illuminated signs are not used. That was in their ordinance. You took it out. I know on Bell Street, they've gone to great lengths to kind of keep that country rural character. Is there a reason you struck that?
Commissioner Reed through the chair, it's so that the design guidelines are not explicitly prohibiting, they can still be designed, so they can, you know, say this should not be used, but we did not want these guidelines to be saying you cannot do something.
So it was still, they can prevent somebody from putting a giant blinking white or plastic, really modern, sign that doesn't fit into the overall kind of motif, I would say, that they've been working to establish and maintain on Bell Street?
Correct. These guidelines that they've set of kind of old west town feel are still something that we would be looking at, as well as if it went to the Board of Architectural Review, they would still be looking at, that deletion of this modern or illuminated sign's not used would not mean that suddenly everyone's going to be proposing a modern or illuminated sign.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Byrd.
I had a little menu here. On page five of your PowerPoint, where exactly is the uplighting in the code section in your Attachment C1? And was that adjusted, or did you need us to give direction about whether we're concurring with the Montecito Planning Commission or not on that? So what page am I looking at in C1?
Commissioner Byrd through the chair, uplighting is currently prohibited in the attachments, both C1 and D1, so it's listed under those prohibited lights. I can find the page or line number if you'd like, but we are asking for your commission's opinion and recommendation on if it should continue to be prohibited, or if we should change that to now allow it in whatever circumstances you may decide.
Okay. So you're going to tell me what page on C1 to look at, right? For how it's phrased now?
Yes, that'd be, I guess, page five on C1, and then on, I can find it for you on Attachment D1 as well if you'd like. It'll just take me a second.
Uplighting, C3 on page five, right?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And then Attachment C1, page 20, you know, we had a lot of conversations from a Mr. Donahoe about this movable copy sign, and I don't honestly know how that falls. I may have when I talked to you a couple months ago, but refresh my memory. I think what he wants to do is take an existing sign structure and then put in a digital moving sign. It's not considered a mobile billboard, but is his concept that he shared with us before, is that going to be prohibited in this section, or?
Commissioner Byrd through the chair, as it is proposed is prohibited, that would be considered an off-site sign. That's the term that the ordinance uses rather than billboard, so it's advertising something that is not on the site that the sign is on.
Okay, so it's by virtue of the location, not necessarily its style or illumination, right?
That is another part of it, of the, it being a screen would be, fall under the electronic messaging center sign type, which is prohibited to anything other than institutional uses like schools and hospitals and churches, or gas station prices. So currently, those two prohibitions in the proposed code, the no off-site signs and very limited electronic signs combined to not allow the proposal, though I believe Mr. Donahoe is here and is going to state his case, and there can be more discussion of that. If your commission decided something to allow, we could discuss how that would be done.
Okay. So in all of these sign, you know, definitions and prohibitions and allowances, is there any chance, the way the ordinance is set up right now, for someone to ask for relief from that, or a modification, or a variance of it?
There is the overall sign plan permit type, which allows for some changes. It is not anything in the world you could imagine you can ask for, but it does allow for some increased area of sign and different location, things like that, and that's something that comes to a decision maker for review.
Is that?
But, yeah, it would not allow signs specifically prohibited, so you cannot apply for it and say, I want an off-site sign, so I'm doing an overall sign plan, or I want one of the other types of prohibited signs. You cannot apply for it through that.
It's like a, like a business park or a commercial site that has a whole sign program, right?
Generally, though, we've broadened it a little bit, so that if you were not a business park, but you wanted a slightly larger sign than is allowed, I believe that's one of the specifics, you can apply for an overall sign plan. And that was, it used to be the sign modification, but we've just eliminated the sign modification permit type and rolled it into the overall sign plan.
Okay, okay. So right now, there's really no way where the project uplift concept would be permitted the way it's drafted right now?
That is correct.
All right. Where is the prohibition on advertising for STRs? Where is that in the code revisions?
That, in the proposed code, it's towards the very end. It is on page 40. Of Attachment C1, yes, page 40 of Attachment C1 is the.
Primipetia evidence of lodging?
Yes.
Number D, okay. Okay? All right, then, it's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if Commissioner Cooney has one, but I'm going to follow up on a question. So like areas like in orchid where they have, and I know, I'm thinking of this one sign, where you have a historical, let's just say it was from the 50s, and it's a high one, and it's no longer prohibited, it's no longer permitted, I should say. New business buys that, they can't go up and change the sign?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, they could change the sign, but they couldn't enlarge the sign or expand the sign, but they could change the sign copy.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Yeah, it's nonconforming now, but you just can't make it bigger than what it is.
Can't make it more nonconforming.
Yeah, okay.
But you could change the sign.
That just was hitting me, just, there's always character in some of those things, and that's just in my mind. Any other comments, questions, staff? No? So then we'll go to public comment, and do we have anyone online?
We have one speaker online, that is Nancy Emerson.
Okay. Ms. Emerson, that's three minutes, so please announce yourself, and then she will be followed by Michael Donahoe, who I have a speaker slip here. Okay.
Chair Martinez and Planning Commissioners, Nancy Emerson, speaking for WeWatch and its Save Our Stars Committee. A WeWatch president said in the early 2000s, what is needed is a cultural change, the expectation that an essential part of a safe and aesthetically pleasing community is outdoor lighting that is energy efficient, dark sky friendly, and neighbor friendly. Thanks to the fine work of Ben Singer and Alex Tuttle, this ordinance can make that change possible and be a model ordinance for those in cities and surrounding counties awaiting it. Please use my handout while I talk to you, and I think it's up on the screen. The first five items, we think, will enable the ordinance to deal successfully over time with our counties' like nighttime lighting problems, light trespass, over illumination, glare, and skyglow. These items are, one, fully shielded or full cutoff fixtures. Delete the exception for string lights, please. In glare prevention, substitute for downward and oriented. Installed, and this is a slight change, install so no light is emitted above a 90-degree angle. Two, maximum height, keep the first sentence, combine the two fixture sections. Three, maximum light levels, candlefoot limits are very important and are in the ordinance. Four, warm Kelvin light bulbs, use 3,000 Kelvin limit for commercial and industrial zones, and 2,700 for all other zones. Add Kelvin to the list in plan's description. Five, timing and motion controls. If the above regulations are adopted, we would eliminate much of this section, we think. We have two questions for your deliberation, one slightly reworded. Can people present be eliminated, or should it be kept? Is a curfew hour not needed, or is it an important additional protection? Six, exceptions and code-required lighting, we suggest you move these two sections to end of general requirements and eliminate the reference to hide in the exceptions it would apply. With. With these changes, the ordinance will continue to be legally strong, as user-friendly as possible, and helpful for daytime staff dealing with nighttime problems. One more item, sign ordinances. We strongly support language that clearly prohibits digital electronic billboards, a proven distraction for drivers. And you have my letter and what I would have said if I had time about the Montecito ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just reading.
You're raptured.
Okay, Mr. Donahoe.
That's a relatively active follow there. I wanted to commend you guys on the civil discourse and your careful consideration also to Ben and the staff for being responsive. Basically, digital billboards, as you know, and you may or may not like them, but they're not only acceptable, but they're basically mirroring what you would have if you had outdoor billboards. I think what's interesting about Lompoc or being separate from the South County is that this particular location is currently an ISOR, and it's the gateway to the Santa Rita Valley. The Calvert family would like to clean it up and do something, and really what we want to do is just replace essentially, upgrade or paint the large sign, but as it relates to the digital sign, we want to just replace what's there with digital. The setback is there. The way that this works, you've seen it before, the ads do not move there in anything, not just ads, but whatever information. It's static, it doesn't move, it's not a distraction per se, any more of a distraction than an actual billboard, a static billboard would be if you were driving by that. So in terms of endangering anybody, it's not going to do that. It's going to be a source of information for the community, but we see it as an opportunity to, the project uplift is just to lift up Lompoc because this particular area is kind of the place where people, there's 26,000 cars that go by there daily, and it's the place that if you're coming off, if you're deciding to come down the one and you're going to other spots like Bulton or Solvang, you may come this way. So we see it as a project that will inspire Lompoc and lift it up, and I think moreover, the key is that it's not going to disturb anything. It's also going to create revenue for the county. So to me, and to us, and to the community, it's actually a positive thing, and I would think that the county would want to start looking at this because it's also a source of revenue. It can't be everywhere. I'm not suggesting that, we're not suggesting that it would be, but it is a first step to considering a project like this. And what I understood is that there may be a way to do this with a permit path, with a minor or major conditional use permit. Yeah, and that's, I don't know if you guys have questions about it? Happy to answer those.
Commissioner Breilman.
Nice to meet you in person, Donahoe. We had time on the phone. Can you just clarify, the concept of your digitization of the sign would be where the movie times, where the smaller structure on the lower left, not the mural that says Lompoc?
We're just going to upgrade the mural too as part of this.
That'll be one static display?
Yeah, that's going to be a static display, and then that would be digitized, and just the standard, it would be looking, it's just as if you were looking at a billboard if you were driving. That's the effect of it.
So when we use the term digitized, I think what I'm hearing from Ms. Emerson and maybe some other folks is that it's when it's a rotating reel that is of concern. How would this work where it's digitized and it's up there, but when does it change?
The ads change instantly, that's it. And they change over a period of, depending on the rotation, it can be 12 seconds, it can be 24 seconds, it can, but it's not something that is going to, there's no animation, right, per se.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Laura.
Commissioner Reed.
So the big rendition on the back of the existing screen, that's just going to be painted?
Yes.
That's conventional sign?
Yes.
So only the little kind of entry kiosk where the features that are, you know, the movies, that's going to be the animated part?
Yes, sir.
And they're just going to be static?
Just static images, but they will change.
They're going to be subject to the refresh rates in the rest of the ordinance that you mentioned?
Commissioner Reed, through the chair. That's correct. As an electronic sign, it would be subject to the refresh rate in the rest of that section if allowed.
And what are the dimensions of that sign?
It's approximately, it's going to be about 14 by about 40 feet wide.
Okay. Well, it's looking better than my original inclination. I thought the giant screen was going to be like on the side of the 405.
Actually, I hear you, and it's interesting because I created a solar-powered digital facade that where you impregnate solar panels with LEDs, and then you create an application over that, and that could work for the other sign because there's enough solar there, but this whole project will be green, but no, we're not doing anything with it. It's just going to be painted, we're just going to refresh. That whole area is going to be refreshed, the whole site's going to be refreshed, but it's just strictly, the LED applies only to the smaller sign.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I guess I'm confused because I asked staff, there was no route to get this thing permitted in the current amendments, but then you talked about a refresh rate that this would have to meet, and Mr. Donahoe talked about a minor CUP, so can you help me understand?
Yes, Commissioner Breilman, through the chair. For the refresh rate, that's currently in the code for when electronic signs are allowed. So again, that was institutional church, school, you know, you can have a, in front of your school, it can say whose birthday it is or something like that, and that has a set refresh rate. As for the kind of potential for CUP or minor CUP, that was from discussions with Mr. Donahoe on, you know, what your commission could do if you decided to allow these things, kind of what options might be to include this in the code. So there's nothing for that now, but it was an option that if you, through deliberation, decide you want to allow this in some form, you could instruct us to include it with approval of a CUP or something like that.
But you have no proposed language to suggest to us right now?
Correct. There's no proposed language for this right now. As the proposed draft that you've received, this would be prohibited, but again, you could instruct us to add a provision for this when we take it to the board.
My recollection, every time I've driven, you know, obviously driven to Lompoc for years and looked at the drive-in theater sitting there, it sits quite a distance off of the highway, isn't it? How far is it between that and ocean?
Yeah, it's about 120 feet, this sign, and the back sign is much further away.
Yeah, so it's a good 120, and you have no neighbors there?
No neighbors. There's a field that the prison owns where they're doing that farming there, there's no, there will be no light that would disturb neighbors. Actually, the flagpole lights, it was interesting that you guys got into that, but the flagpole lights that exist up on top of the hill are probably brighter than the sign that we would propose, and of course, you can dim the sign at different times of night. I'm all for stargazing, stargazing is good, so it doesn't, you know, the trafficked hours are the hours that are of interest anyway, in terms of advertising. There is the emergency stuff and community stuff that we could do as well. I guess you guys have probably all been to Lompoc. One thing Lompoc is known for is murals. So at least we're kind of creating a digital sort of representation, and you can do a lot of other things on the side, you know, for the public and even the arts and et cetera. So it's a play, you know, can be a form of communication. It will be.
Any other questions? I just have one quick question for someone. Whose district is this in?
I believe, Chairman Hines, I believe this is third and maybe fourth. I, it's, yeah, it's very close to the border between third and fourth, and...
It's Joan, is the, I think that...
Third, I believe.
That's Park.
Third, I think it was fourth before the board was changed a little while ago.
Okay. I think it's Joan Hartman.
All right, thank you. That was my only last question. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so back to staff, I guess. There's no other speakers. Any questions for staff? And I take it we go into deliberations? Anyone have anything to say?
Thank you to staff. This was a huge effort in all the cross-references and everything. I really appreciated how detailed it was, and it took me several times to, thank you.
Commissioner Park.
I am again mindful of the effort that Nancy Emerson, WeWatch, Dark Sky, put into this over a decade, and I appreciate it that they made specific requested changes, and I wonder if those can be accommodated. Do you have an opinion on that, Mr. Singer? Are those changes, you think something we can add in? Good ideas, bad ideas?
Commissioner Park, through the chair. I mean, we, so we did look at the recommendations and requests from WeWatch and from Ms. Emerson. We had met with them on a number of occasions and coordinated some of the requirements that we did apply. Ultimately, it's a balance, trying to provide for dark sky compliance while not being overly restrictive in terms of what people can do with their properties. So as far as like the string lights, that is something that you totally have discretion to address or make a recommendation to the board. String lights, as you know, they've become increasingly popular over the years, and we do get a number of complaints about string lights in terms of lighting issues. As written, they would not be subject to the fully shielded, fully hooded requirement because of their, most string lights aren't hooded or shielded, and they often kind of rotate in the wind, and it's hard for string lights to stay directed downward. So we determined that they wouldn't be subject to the fully hooded, shielded requirement, but they would otherwise have to meet all the other requirements in terms of like the maximum light levels at the property line, the cutoff time at night, and so if you look at the totality of the requirements, you're still have some protections there even with the string lights.
And that downward and oriented language, that is in the proposed ordinance, right?
Yes, the fully shielded, full cutoff standard. The maximum height, we wanted to, it was drafted in a manner to address issues where you have maybe a multi-story building, two or three-story building, and you might need lighting at the top level, which would be greater than the height requested by WeWatch. But if it is freestanding, then it is a lower light level or a lower height. So I think staff is, continues to be comfortable with what staff had recommended, but again, it's your discretion. As far as the Kelvin, the Kelvin levels, again, just trying to strike that balance, the 3,000 that we have in place, the 3,000 and 4,000 that we have in place is consistent with dark sky code sort of universal standards. Going down to 2,700 would be a little more restrictive than kind of what the standard sort of across the country is, but again, it's, the difference or incremental delta between 3,000 and 2,700 is not that significant.
I would think that, to be really practical, we'd look at what's available as a homeowner goes out to buy products. And it is my observation, you're absolutely right, that when one goes out to buy string lights, and people do that in their patios and things, and they generally do face down, that I don't go to Home Depot and see a hooded string light. I don't know what that would actually look like. On Kelvin bulbs, I mean, the Kelvin system for light bulbs, I notice myself, when I go to shop for outdoor lights and so forth, I can get plenty of lights that are 2,900 Kelvin, and they kind of have that nice old-fashioned yellow look, but I've actually not seen them at 2,700, and so I do have some concerns that we do things that are practical and within the ability of the normal homeowner to comply with. So I see the point from both sides. Thank you.
And I just wanted to comment that I don't envy your position because there's a very, you said the word right, there's a balance. People want things, and this is getting in people's backyards, but there's also a commercial factor here of the cost of compliance. I mean, you could, you could, the string lights, for instance, it's a quick fix to the expensive area of saying, okay, now you have to go this way and put all this through. I mean, that is a huge expense. A lot of times I hear from commercial people is that when they're building something, that they have to put way more lights in because, oh, there's a safety factor, there's a, there's this element that you have to at least light up the areas that are dark because you're trying to keep light on structures where you don't want problems. This is all coming into a balance issue in regard to, and I can appreciate, and I appreciate your work on this matter. Thank you. That's my comments right there.
And, Mr. Chair, I would add that, yeah, there are lighting requirements at like doors and entrances, and those would, they have to meet minimum light levels, and so with, if there's a conflict with the safety requirement or regulation, building code standard, for example, that would prevail. And...
Just like nowadays, your lighting areas, which you never thought you'd have to light just because you've got problems with vagrants, I mean, the people just causing problems to use, you're trying to keep a light for that criminal element of it, which you would never put a light over there before. I know I have that, but that's just a factor of life, but again, thank you.
So do we have a call for, Commissioner Breilman?
Well, I was just going to add some deliberation things. I defer to Commissioner Park in terms of the uplighting. I probably agree with him because I think I understood him to say he wasn't supportive of the Montecito Planning Commission's recommendation, right? And to me, that seems like such a huge effort to roll back. The one other thing in the Montecito Planning Commission's recommendation about having exterior lights not pointed toward the ocean and the coastal zoning ordinance, I would support that. That came from MPC, right? Did that, or maybe that was staff? I don't know. I definitely would support that. And since I have a lot of Article II in my district, that makes sense. And then I understand for the project uplift thing that that would have to be shuffled over to a CUP process, and that's fine with me. I would even be comfortable with it being a minor CUP. It's a little simpler for the applicants because I think that what he's suggesting isn't as offensive as the kinds of things I have in my mind, like when you go to Los Angeles and you see, you know, rotating signage all the time. So if there's a way we can work that in, I would do that. Mr. Donahoe laughed. Anyway, so, and other than that, I would, you know, defer to whatever Commissioner Park thinks about the WeWatch suggestions. So that's it. Otherwise, I'd support, what do you have?
Commissioner Reed.
Just an additional question or two. I just, you know, this time of year, a lot of shopping centers, commercial areas, they're installing in anticipation of more holiday business, I suppose. The generators with the pole and the big lights on it, similar thing, we looked at, we were looking at the lighting improvements for Orchid Community Park. Since they didn't have permanent lighting, they're bringing these portable units with the generator and the lights. Are those covered in this ordinance?
Commissioner Reed, through the chair. Those would be subject to the ordinance.
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Those would be subject to the ordinance. We do have some kind of standards for temporary lighting associated with various things that can not meet all of the standards. You know, if you have temporary lights up for something specific, that doesn't always have to meet the fully shield and things like that, but temporary, you know, the generator with the lights for a parking lot or something like that would be covered by this ordinance, yes.
And then secondly, to just bridge on what Commissioner Bradley said with respect to Mr. Donahoe's proposed project in Lompoc, since, as he mentioned, it seems far less intrusive than the giant animated billboards I'd first suspected it was based on the illustration. Is there going to be an accessible pathway for him to pursue that? But would that also invite public comment from the area around it? Because our experience with that particular piece of the world isn't great and is far different than people who actually live in Lompoc.
Commissioner Reed through the chairs. So the method that he might, you know, apply for a project like that is currently up for your discussion and recommendation to us. As proposed, there is no method for him to do so. But if you wish to instruct us to include a method either with a minor conditional use permit or a major conditional use permit or whatever you think is appropriate, we would include that and then the amount of public comment and neighborhood comment and things like that that would be elicited would be dependent on that permit type that you decide. So a major CUP would have more. It would have to come to the planning commission for decision. A minor CUP would have somewhat less. It's a little bit simpler and easier. But that's up to your discussion and discretion on which one you think would be best.
You know, I, I, I think in the interest of collegiality with our fellow boards, we should take a real quick look at your Slide 14, the MPC recommendations, because I referred to one and Commissioner Bradley referred to another. I just think we should, our cause of getting this done will be done faster if we just address them right now. So allow for uplighting with specimen trees. It seems like there's, we agree, let's leave the ordinance as you have it without uplighting. Then there's this statement, number two, require that string lights installed outside of landscaping be hooded. I don't actually know what installed outside of landscaping means, but I guess it might be, I don't know.
Commissioner Park through the chair. That would be something like over a patio. The outside of landscaping means it's not lights in a tree canopy or wrapped around a tree.
Okay, but since most people put them over patios and things, then, then those would have to be hooded. And we get back to that same thing of does a product that's hooded, string lights even exist? And how would that occur? So I'm, I'm not particularly interested in that item, number two. Then clarify that 60-day limit for seasonal lighting shall be usage of the lights, not placement. Is there some ambiguity in the ordinance right now?
Commissioner Park through the chair. It may be a little bit. This was just something that the MPC wanted just to make more explicit that I believe it says, you know, a 60-day limit on seasonal lighting being up or something like that. And they just said, well, can you make it clear that it's having the lights on so that if someone forgets to take their Christmas lights down, but doesn't turn them on, we're not coming after them?
Okay. I don't have a position there that's in opposition to that. I know that sometimes, and I'm probably guilty of this myself, which is a, oh, make it a little more clear. Make it a little more clear. And so we're always sending it back to staff to keep adjusting. And yet you think it's pretty clear already or you wouldn't have done it, so.
We have no opposition to this one. It was a pretty simple change to make it be, say, 60-day limit on seasonal lighting usage not being up, something like that.
But if it's a simple change, does it mean you have to come back for another hearing with us?
You could approve it with these changes. Like, so you would recommend approval with the changes made at the hearing? And we wouldn't have to come back to you. We would just go to the board and incorporate those changes for them.
Because it's a practical matter. I think we've, we've heard these suggestions, including the WeWatch ones, and there are rational positions to be taken on them. And it will be kind of up to the board, which is the legislative authority, to pick and choose what it wants. I know that Supervisor Hartman is aware of the Project Uplift idea for Lompoc. She's in pretty good communication with, with WeWatch and we'll discuss that longer. So I personally feel for me to spend a lot of time on those things and trying to convince them one way or the other, even convince my own brain what's, what's right, is a bit of a waste of time. Okay, and then requiring that lights shall not be directed towards the ocean. That seems like it's a good idea. So do people direct lights towards the ocean and? Okay, because they, it might highlight something they want to see or whatever, or they want to catch squid. I don't know. Okay, yeah. All right. So I think that makes sense. So for me, what I would say is for MPC, one, three, and four should be part of our, our ultimate motion to adopt this.
Commissioner Park through the chair. One would allow for uplighting.
Oh, I'm sorry, to say no on one?
I believe you mean three and four, you would like incorporated, and one and two, you would.
You got it. That's why I need people like you around me. So I appreciate that.
And Commissioners, Mr. Chair Commissioners, one thing to clarify is with regard to Montecito, so Montecito Planning Commission makes recommendations on the, the Montecito Land Use Development Code straight to the board. So these four recommendations for the MLUDC will go straight to the board. Your role is whether or not to carry these over to the coastal zone where the Montecito Planning Commission recommends to you, who then recommends to the Board of Supervisors. So what we may end up with here is a situation where Montecito Land Use Development Code is different than the rest of the county, which is okay. And then the board can determine if they want to retain that, those differences, or try to unify.
So in keeping in line with what Commissioner Park was just suggesting, we can, we can take that suggestion and move with it in line with, with a recommendation to the coastal commission is what you're saying. Correct?
Through the board.
Yeah, through the board. And I just wanted to mention one other thing with regard to the CUP concept for the Lompoc project is if we, with your recommendation and ultimate board adoption, if we include a CUP provision that would potentially allow a project such as Project Uplift, just keep in mind that that CUP provision would be potentially used elsewhere in the county and in other situations. So hard to create it for just a single known project. It would be established as, as a permit path for, for other applicants as well.
Commissioner Martinez, if it helps move things along, because I think we're all interested in that, I would certainly be happy to make a motion to adopt all of the recommendations of staff and add to it recommendations three and four from the Montecito Planning Commission. And that's what the motion would be that I would make if, if other commissioners indicate that they'd like to do that.
Mr. Chair Commissioner, just to clarify that motion, the latter part of that motion regarding this would be to recommend the board consider items three and four only in the coastal zone.
Correct.
Or Commissioner Park, would you like to include items three and four in the land use development code for the inland area as well to carry?
No, because I don't want anybody arguing that if you're on top of the Sierra Madre Road and you've, and you've got a light and it points toward the ocean 70 miles away, that it violates the, the code.
I would just add though, for consideration, that I believe the allowing, allow for uplighting of the US flag is in line with the tradition that the flag should never be in the dark.
Chairman Martinez, it is, there are ways to light a flag from above. It's not impossible to have down lighting above a flag.
Okay, like on the top of a flagpole pointing down is what you're suggesting?
Correct. That would be the other option if you don't want to, you know, if, generally, we had a whole discussion on flag code.
Okay, no, then you could stop. I trust you. It addresses my concern about never leaving the flag in the dark. Okay. Commissioner Bradley?
Well, I'm wondering if Commissioner Park would include the concept for a CUP for for digital signage that's static. And I'm assuming that the findings in that would be our, our regular CUP findings, right? Because that's, I think, the only thing that's not on our slide from MPC that we're talking about.
Commissioner Bradley, yes, if you wanted to include the provision for, I would specify electronic signage and/or off-site signage through a CUP. When someone applies for that, it would be a normal CUP process that would, if it's a major full CUP, come to the planning commission. If it's a minor CUP, come, go to the zoning administrator.
How many scrubbers is that?
Oh. Mr. Cooney trying to pull us past, trying to pull us past lunchtime. Okay. So I guess what we're looking for is Commissioner Park to amend his motion to include this language that has been suggested just right now. Is that correct?
I'm glad to. I haven't even made the motion yet.
I thought you did.
Anyway, we'll, we'll cover that. But it was a CUP for electronic or, did you say off-site?
Off-site. So that would be, again, like a billboard where it's, the sign is on a property that is different from what it's advertising for. So if you have a sign for, the kind of example is the Chumash Casino right next to Lompoc, that's an off-site sign. It's not on the site that it is advertising.
And that that would require a CUP? So are we now talking about the P. Supes Anderson sign that's nine miles from Builton? As you're driving down one on, is that an off-site sign?
That would be an off-site. Basically.
Do those require CUPs now or do they not?
Well, billboards are prohibited in the county. So any billboard you see, unless they're advertising for an onsite use, any billboard you see currently is prohibited or non-conforming. If you establish a CUP path, then you are potentially opening the door for billboards in the county. So just keep that in mind.
But we, we don't even have to refer to off-site signs, do we, in this?
So Chair, Chair, I feel like we're rushing a little bit too fast because we're about ready to make a motion and I don't think we're all clear on what we're.
Yes.
So can we take like a five-minute break real quick just so we can provide Commissioner Park and the Commissioners some clarity on, on what we're? Because what I, what I hear is Commissioner Bradley is suggesting a potential permit path, but there's some unintended consequences that may come with that. So I just want to make sure we're clear to the commission before we wrap that into a motion.
You know, one way of looking at it is that, and I don't disagree with Commissioner Riley, but I, I, I do agree with, I think where you're headed, that this will take some working up and so forth. And I would, so I'm happy with actually just adopting the recommendations we have now, plus these Montecito Planning Commission ones limitation. And then the CUP proposal and so forth is something that people can digest and, and, and talk to the members of the Board of Supervisors about and leave it up to them to deal with that. That's kind of how I see as a good way to do it. I'd rather do that than have it come back here.
Commissioner Park through the chair. It wouldn't have to come back here. Again, you can make the recommendation to us that we go to the board and include a provision for a CUP. And then between today and the board hearing, we would take a look at the ordinance and find a way to fit it in. However, say if you don't include it as part of your recommendation to the board and kind of instruction to us, Mr. Donahue can come back for the board hearing and make the exact same case that he's made to them and see if they want to include it at that point rather than you making a recommendation to the board about it.
That seems, the latter
I agree.
choice seems simpler and more expeditious.
So Chair, can we take a five-minute break? Council and I are, would like to have some space to marinate for a second. Well, that's, that's a longer conversation, but.
Okay.
Let's just take a five-minute break really quick.